Jerry, hi, how are you? I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry. Somebody just came up that I had to do.
Oh, you sir?
This appears to be a patrol. But unless you saw it in the...
Who do we know? Oh, you.
And I'm parking.
Um...
I don't see a car.
Is it?
Is it?
Is it?
Well, I need to know what she had to do. I can't, I can't sleep on what the application was. It would leave the drill smoke like thunder we have here. Unless we already heard the means of this assembly.
They'll only say everything correct. Well, that's something that they'll have.
They'll happen. You would have, you would have to have...
There are, there are a bunch of... Yes, yeah.
Have you talked with your life at all about your... Yeah, you want some questions for me.
Family, they consume you.
Thank you. Yes.
For space. For he has it.
I was like, I don't know, but who is that?
So, so.
And this is what we sign off. It's for a place, it's for a...
Too late, I'm not sure. It's a pretty situation. We're not going to shoot them, so. We have to do it.
Hey guys. Who are you now?
Did they, uh, tell you that I didn't have chair?
No. Definitely not. I was watching and I saw Jack was going down.
She doesn't realize I was... I get upset because I was... I know.
How many of you? Has it called home to Harvard? It's a mission of... Sometimes it's a long thing. And when you need them, or someone needs them, it's supposed to be a solution, or it's supposed to kill you. It's a system. It's not as close. My brother's Charlie.
Obi. Yeah, I'm waiting for my phone. After Davis.
Or this eighteen year old.
Wait one more person to show up. I know. Man is here.
Hey. Good, thank you, Jerry. Don't you still, I should want to be able to talk. We heard you too. Oh, no? Good, good, good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised with the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
I want to send the lead.
Send a second lead. I don't even show up. What's this? What?
Mr. Gilli.
Here.
Mr. Halbison.
Here.
Mr. Langley.
Here.
Mr. Nafthali. Mr. Bibiak. Mr. Inger.
Here.
Mr. Gross. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Halbison.
Here. I see that Mr. Nafthali and Mr. Bibiak are here, so I'll place first open at Majinber and Luke. Can I ask him to please rise to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever so great.
Uh, can I have approval of the minutes for the previous meeting, the August twenty-seventh meeting? Motion, was it the August twenty-seventh, September seventeenth?
Wait, 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 to August twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh meeting, okay. Motion, August twenty-seventh meeting?
How about Halbison?
Halbison.
Halbison, Al Halbison, you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mayor Gelli. At.
Gelli.
Gelli and Halbison.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Inger.
Yes.
And Mr. Halbison.
Yes. Can I have motion for the minutes of the September seventeenth meeting? Motion of Mayor of Majinber. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second from Al Halbison, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes. Madam Secretary, any correspondence for tonight's meeting?
Yes. Appeal number three nine six seven.
Three nine six...
Complication, they are set forward.
Okay.
They're asking to carry to the November nineteenth, and they waive any requirements.
They waive any requirements for November nineteenth, that's our next meeting?
That's our next meeting.
What's the rule?
Because the first Monday is election day on Tuesday, the second one is Veterans Day, so...
Oh, okay. Um, November nineteenth. Anyone here from Congregation Mostar?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. The reason for the adjournment is because our traffic engineer could not be present this evening. And we couldn't get a replacement traffic engineer. It would not be possible to present this application without a traffic engineer. Um, hence the request for the adjournment. We will agree to waive all time requirements, and we just ask that this be carried to the next available meeting, which is November nineteenth.
Is this the first, second, third?
It's the first time we're carrying, I mean, we carried last month, but we carried...
That's because you were...
Right, because you didn't get to us, we were the bottom of the...
Right.
First time we're carrying.
So, last month was the first time it was on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Um, and previous time, months, months way back, it was table then?
Uh, memory serves me correctly, it was on the agenda way back, and I had a tech meeting and...
And then we noticed how anyone?
And we definitely we noticed, so.
Okay, so then I should... Anyone have a problem there?
No.
What?
No.
No. Brandon, you noticed on schedule today in the morning? Good, okay. So, can I have a motion to the table, Congregation Mostar, appeal number three nine six seven, to eleven nineteen? Mayor Gelli, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Obi Gonzalez, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes. Anyone that's here in this courtroom for appeal number three nine six seven, it'll be heard, um, at eleven, at November nineteenth.
Without further notice.
Without further notice, have a waiver come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other correspondence, Madam Secretary?
Yes, appeal number four zero eight eight, that Somerset NH, I'm actually on here.
Yes, okay.
They're asking, they didn't advertise properly, so they cannot be heard.
Okay, so they're not even on the agenda?
But they need, no, they need carried.
Okay, so can I have a motion to carry four zero eight eight, Somerset NH? Right, we're leaving it off.
No, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry. They did advertise, but they missed one important person that's five feet two hundred feet. They missed Leisure Village. So, they have to, they don't have to be noticed, they just have to notice to Leisure Village. Everything else was noticed properly.
Well, how will everyone else know?
I can't hear it. I can't hear it. I'm here for that.
How will everyone else know that the meeting won't be, the hearing won't be going on about?
Okay, see, I don't know if anybody, see, you want...
Is anyone here from Somerset NH?
What's that?
Is anyone here, any, any applicant here for Somerset NH?
Yeah, that's mine also.
That's yours also?
But I didn't do the notices.
Okay.
Yeah, the hearing wasn't actually did the notices. Um, yes, I'm here for that one. Apparently, um, for the people who always like there are here, but if it's possible, the preference would be to announce tonight that it's being carried, and we will send a new notice to Leisure Village, to the one, to the one party that was missed. Everybody else was noticed.
How many people in and around the area besides Leisure Village?
I didn't do the notices, I'm not gonna, I just plan, maybe they're the other ones, I mean, they're...
Is it a extensive list?
Not a plan, I didn't even look at the list. I didn't do it, because I was in Israel when this came out.
If it's not, not proper notice, it has to be re-noticed. It wasn't, no, that was, those proper, it was sent, missed one, one major, um...
The, the notice was proper.
Yes, one second, one second.
But they're saying we just need to notice that.
That's right, that's right. Okay, fine. Jerry, you give that, we're just gonna re-notice everyone?
Have you?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, it's what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, it is what it is, let's save it for tomorrow. So, if anyone that's here for appeal number, can I have a motion to carry four zero eight eight, Somerset NH?
Well, you don't need a motion to carry, because we're doing the notices very quickly.
I know, but let's just do it anyway. Can I, can I, can I have a motion?
I vote.
Motion for Al Halbison.
I see this is over here, right?
And Jerry, you have no assistance tonight, I heard that you're not... Who's the second, that's one?
I do agree.
I have a motion from Al, can I have a second? Second of Majinber?
I don't think they have to be noticed.
Yes. I am, I'm, um, Mrs. Weinstein, can you tell them, can you tell them what just happened? Okay, madam, I mean, I have a local... Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gelli.
If you need to be noticed, then yes, otherwise, no.
Yes, with me notice.
Yes.
Mr. Inger. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes. Yes. Okay, anyone that's here for appeal number four zero eight eight, Somerset LLC, NH LLC, will be heard on eleven nineteen, November nineteenth. Any other correspondence, Madam Secretary?
Forty-eight seven, Devon.
Forty-eight seven, Devon, yes. What do they want?
They have to be noticed.
They have to be noticed. What happened to their notice? Who's here for Devon?
I am about it.
Friday was also a ten day.
Friday's end.
Oh, between Friday and...
Well, it didn't get a full-time approval before Saturday, so it loses its day. Is that an issue?
Sure.
Sure, okay. There we go. Steve, we're pretty set the issue. Okay. There you go. You know, we got, we didn't keep score, multiple one. Okay, can I have a motion to carry, um, uh... Motion for zero eight eight, Mayor Gelli's motion. Second with, with notice.
Yeah, with notice, that's all thing.
Well, we're gonna give it a re-notice, we're gonna give it a re-notice.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, wait, 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 it was dropped, it was noticed promptly. It should be noticed. What?
Required to be noticed.
Required to be noticed, okay, perfect. I have a motion from Mayor Gelli, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Obi Gonzalez, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes.
Mr. Langley. Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes. Okay, um, anyone that's here for appeal number four zero eight seven, Devon, equity approved, uh, it'll be heard on November nineteenth, if you get your notices on time. Um, anything else, Madam Secretary?
I think that's it.
Jerry, before you get to the applications, can we just discuss at least one of the resolutions first?
Yes.
And that's Resolution four oh eight two, um, Spitz. You requested to renew...
Moody Gross, Moody Gross wants to see the whole man, he's not here, can I, anyway?
There was a, a addition of resolutions to the certain location of the United States libraries.
Correct.
On, on hold, if you have this now, but at least...
I don't, I don't, I don't have it. Ten minutes. Ten, ten minutes ago. And was it, was it there, um, in the discussion? One second, wait, wait, cut it out. One second, wait, wait, cut it off. Was it in the resolution or in discussion that should give it to carry enough time so he can look at it?
Before this resolution, this is a petition, before the resolution is memorialized, the applicant must present it ten days before the meeting. Your files, plan, show him the layout of the street, and also the parking will be facilitated.
But it wasn't, it was only submitted ten minutes ago. So how can we look at it, tell me, do you know how to look at it? How can you discuss it?
Look at it, please. I, I have to say that I have this...
Right, I didn't, I was gonna have the first one.
I'll put it on the agenda, November 19th.
Right.
Thank you.
The other option, eight, it's a short night, uh, after the break, we're looking at very similar looking.
But did we talk about one?
Uh, yeah, I haven't given you a short time.
It was a short night?
Is there quite a day in that one for the next meeting?
Hey, we can have a short night.
You know, that will happen now? Okay, fine. You know what? Terry? We'll let it go. Jerry, we'll let it go. We're gonna decide, yeah, I think we did it, you didn't have it ten days prior, it's ten minutes before, I can't even look at it closely, um, we're just gonna have to go for 11, for 11, 11 19th meeting, unless tonight's meeting is over early enough where I can sit down and study it, um, and see if I have any questions.
You're listening, Jerry.
What?
To get done earlier, or...
We don't get done earlier, I can't...
That's the second thing tonight, I do.
I can't look at it on the line. Okay, guys, is that a wall, Jerry?
Is it?
What? Yes, okay.
Yeah, I would suggest we vote all, and later on, if you have, if you have...
If we have a chance, we'll vote all the resolutions later on, okay?
Old business we have, 4045.
4045, signed flying.
I have it on hold.
On hold, this is correct, 4045. We, at that point, said that we're gonna come back just for a vote, and the applicant wanted to weigh out seven members. Who's the applicant, where is the applicant? Please step out. You had an attorney here last time?
I have one.
Another story, you know, you gotta step over.
Uh, Ms. Weinstein, representing...
An attorney was, or what? What'd you say?
I have one, but...
Was you giving an attorney or something last time? No?
You're gonna have Ms. Weinstein to let you?
Uh, thank you.
My, no, it's indicate Ms. Weinstein, it was your turn.
Well, Ms. Weinstein showed up, uh, briefly, uh, but it was the last one of the things she wasn't familiar with the application, she, she had something else she had to do, the applicant was...
Friday, please. Ms. Weinstein stood at that microphone and said, yes, I have nothing for a tank, I'll go down the hallway and I'm here, right?
So she's on the hall, why don't we just bring her in?
And two minutes later, she left.
Right, right.
So, so the applicant is here, we're just here for a vote.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry.
Oh, I forgot, yeah. Correct.
A lot of questions, in fact, they chose not to go back on, because they know the school board.
That's correct.
Right.
That is correct. No, no, you know, just do that. That is correct too. So, from where it reads, on both these reasons, what?
We were pretty good so far.
So, pretty good.
So, but where are we at right now? The people who, 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 we have a certification as they usually...
Yes. Obi Gonzalez was not here last time, and we have a certification, and we read and saw, the whole party there.
So, the applicant is saying, if he's not his attorney, he's prepared to go forward with the six, whatever.
That is correct.
That's correct.
I only make one request, my client spoke to me, she was no longer objecting to the application, but she would just like the board to hear several comments that she wants to...
Now, did you hear me? Did you hear me just follow the writing? I appreciate that, but, you know, if there was other people here last meeting than I'm here tonight, there's comments.
You just, if you would use the time to just destroy my client, so that she have a say.
You could, you're a better legal lawyer than I am.
I do, it's a good support. Do you understand? That is, that's, that's true as well. The board remembers, the board asked the applicant to reach out and shake my client, but she has not done it. I, I, I request them to raise the concerns again.
Okay. So what are you trying to say?
What they thought, I'm interested in this discussion, sir. I request that two sides should be...
Okay.
I request that two sides...
Okay.
It was, it was required.
It, it, and...
You're saying the two sides didn't meet, didn't discuss?
Yeah.
It, it, it wasn't a condition of Ford, the way it was left was that, if, if Ford don't listen, we come back and vote for a vote, I think, before they clear, we're just coming back to vote.
I don't believe she had more than just a client, of course.
The client listened to your clients, you opened up the testimony, then I'm gonna have everyone here that was here last time to be able to open the public again, I can't do that. That is the issue that I'm having, unless you wanna say some things in lieu of your clients, and you can just come in now.
How's your vote, you know?
You know?
You, you're like, you know what your client wants to say?
If you know what your client wants to say, please tell us now.
Uh, my client, he just like, uh, some concerns in regard to, uh, parking in the university address to, uh, limit the amount of traffic within the corner, uh, the road. It's pretty, very good, um, position, uh, no question, once, do you know what your client's comment?
I can't, I cannot ask your client to come up, because then I have to tell again to the public, and the public is not here, that was here last time, and it's gonna, and it's gonna do, um, create havoc.
I think it's two issues, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
This application, I think, there's two issues, and one is that, um, instead of having all parking spots opening up onto the road, have a narrow parking spot, you open up on the lot, this will be more, uh, parking space. We have that in, in some places, do a case on the side.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah. Of course, because they think they can hear it for a part. Okay, go ahead.
One of the concerns, my client has actually worked people on that street, with the collection of two driveways, doesn't have, it was a limitation, you know, on, obviously, parking, you should have. She's requesting that there be a single, in the city, for us to have any car enters, fill in the driveway, going the, the wrong, first lessening, uh, amount of driveway spaces, increasing the getting of additional parking space on the road, essentially...
I think I want to say, you put the two driveways together?
No, we said, put the two, and only one.
Make one drive.
And make one driveway, which is...
It's just handling. We've worked, uh, I, I think they might be referring to put the two driveways together, so you have green on the other side, is that what you're trying to say?
No, I didn't know.
We don't know, we try to see this. So, I think, if they can utilize more of Wall Street, Wall Street parking.
The legal parking, coming back. I mean, you come, the driver here, and one driver, hey, give me this one section.
Correct.
Both driveways.
Here, and there's one driveway here.
But, yeah, side by side, and then, you know, more on street parking, that's what they want, one more on street parking. We, we've worked also that there's a flip side to this about that, that because of their testimony at the last meeting, that there's a lot of true tragedy, that people cut on that road to going in, so, so, the less, are, the less parking on Moore Avenue, we got, we work that too, sometimes. Either that's, or less, or less, or less, or less, which was less traffic for that too, so...
But, like, this is a...
Okay.
You can't be from Hawaii to one, in order for a car to come in externally, and twenty-four from YI.
It's not, it's not gonna work.
Right, not talking about a, not talking about two, come on.
Will you push the two driveways together, and then we do what, we do what?
So, if you push the two driveways together, at least you'll save someone, they'd be like, both sides.
Yeah, we have a spot there.
So, so, so both driveways will be side by side, make, so like that, you don't have to make full, with full length driveways, you can make the driveway narrower, to control, to utilize each other's driveway a little bit to get in, and then go, and then go into its proper space. Jerry, does that make, that, Terry, does that make sense to you, what I just said?
Yes, you want to put the two driveways together, which means you'll have a room or a room or something more important in front of the driveway.
Correct, correct.
Twenty-eighteen, two separate driveways.
Yeah, but then the two driveways...
I think that's important, because I, I...
On the property, that's one word. No, but, but, because then also each driveway, if you're putting it, can be made a little narrower as well, because each one's utilized part of the other driveway.
I want to do that, to that, to share with the call.
Okay.
I, I recommend that the board approve for the driveway.
Yeah, you will, okay.
Two driveways together, you might say, catch a spot on each side.
It might.
It might.
Depends on the gray now.
It's a gray now, probably not at all.
And the applicant would work with the board, send the air to accomplish whatever goal the board has got.
Okay, so let's move forward, and let's go for the vote.
Anything else, Mr. Gonzalez?
That's it? Okay. Okay, so can I have a, um, are you okay going with six, six numbers, you was hoping that, you wanted to settle last time? Okay.
What's, Mr. Chairman, there's another, I told you the plans before.
Yes.
The, what, if we, if, if this gets approved, one basis in the, one apartment in the basement, not two.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Uh, how many steps in front of four?
What?
How many steps in doors on the plaza now? Let's go downstairs. If you have one driveway, it's basically also full cars in, and parking on the angle in front of the house, and just eliminate, uh, the necessity of visual parking on the street. And I think it's, it's present on that street right now, you know, situations such as that.
Mr. Gilli, the answer for this question, the, the testimony was that the resolution says it's going to be one set of steps for each basement on the side of the house.
Right. That's correct.
The answer is one.
Yeah.
Or one. Only one door on the side of the house.
Only one door.
Only one door.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
May I, please, should I make another note?
Okay, fine. Can we move forward with the motion, uh, based on what you heard now? Uh, is it a motion?
It's a motion if you want the driveway together.
However you wanna do it.
I'll make a motion to, to the application, which is driveway being together, um, one door to the basement for each apartment.
Yeah.
One door, for you now.
Yeah, one door.
Say, each side.
Sorry.
Um, and, and I just want to remember that last, uh, we did see the testimony that the taxman, who many years, they showed, has been holding a lot.
Correct.
So...
It was just, it was just broken in.
It was just, and, and when he closed, it was also kind of sort of interactive, so, that's my motion.
And the regular...
With the regular, which might be upgraded, uh, irrigation works, um, et cetera.
Okay. I had a motion from, um, um, Inger, Majinber, can I have a second? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Obi Gonzalez, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gilli.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley. Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes. Good night, and good luck. Um, we're gonna move on with the old business. Appeal number 4078, Madison Second LLC. We're doing 4078, yes. What?
Are you told?
We'll do it from scratch, we'll do it from scratch anyway.
Coming up from scratch?
And there's different members, so...
What?
There's different members, I don't think it's gonna take us very long to do it from scratch.
Okay, um, we'd like to move forward, and please ask everyone to exit quietly. Thank you.
Chairman, if I remember correctly, a number of members want to go. We can just do, we'll just...
Okay, fine, hold on a second, then. One second. Uh, ready?
Yes.
Can you give the application directly?
Is it working?
Yes. Forty seventy-eight.
Madison Second.
Madison Second, we'll start you over again, so please, please...
Start it over?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I want that.
Old business, we'll start you over.
September 19th, November 18th. The applicant proposes to consult the single family home.
Guys. Thank you.
The area is to leave the maximum building coverage, not the support, doesn't have the planning board, two holes in it.
Okay, well, let's test it.
I, I have.
I have the resolution, we've got, we all have the resolution.
Okay.
It's approved by planning board. At a thirty, thirty percent lot coverage, and now they're asking for thirty-two point five. There were other approvals from planning boards, you have it in the resolution, I don't have any variation.
What?
Brandon, I think it's, it's thirty-three point seven four, that's being requested. We'll, we'll, we'll address all of that in the testimony.
Okay, go ahead, tell me, fine.
Good evening. Marion Weinstein, on behalf of...
The gentleman, please, show, follow the application.
I'm on the gentleman. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, Brandon.
And, and I thought that's why you put up the gate. Good evening. Marion Weinstein, on behalf of applicant Madison Second LLC. Um, the applicant, who is the Schron family, purchased this property, and just to give the board a little bit of history, this property was first approved as a bank, and then was sold from the owner of the bank, and it was sold and approved at the planning board for one single-family home and four duplex units. Um, after that, the, oh, the owner who purchased the property and got the approval for the single-family plus four duplexes.
You said the property, you the whole...
I mean, the entire mother lot, I'm sorry, correct. The entire mother lot, not just this, not just lot seven point ten. The owner, it was somebody by the name of Berger, went ahead, he was the one who got the approval to do one single-family and four duplex units. He built himself a single-family and then said, I don't need the duplexes, all I wanted was a single-family home. So he then went and sold it yet again, and it was sold to my client, the Schron family. and they have many of them, build their children nice homes that'll be, that will work for their families on single-family lots. They took a look at this and said, "We don't want duplexes. We'd rather have a less intense use. Let's go with single-family homes," and put three single-family units instead of four duplexes. So to put it to perspective, I know you all have a copy of the resolution of what the planning board approved. When the planning board approved this, the planning board was coming from the perspective that they had already approved four duplexes on, on this piece of property that includes lot seven point ten. Instead, let's go, which would mean eight families living on this little piece of this corner here of, of Second Street and Route Nine. Instead, let's go ahead and let's approve three lots, and there'll be three single-family lots, which means six families living there instead of eight families, and a whole lot less traffic. Right, exactly what happened. The applicant, for whatever reason, asked for lot coverage of thirty percent on all three lots, not realizing that this lot printed on Route Nine, and really they should have asked for thirty-three point seven four percent or whatever we're asking for. Now, the planning board surely would have approved it because they were very, very happy to have six families living there instead of eight families. We didn't ask for it. So, whatever we asked for got approved, but what we asked for was thirty percent lot coverage. Map was filed. Now that the map is filed, and the applicant realized, "I really want thirty-three point seven four percent on this one lot," we are now at the zoning board, rather than the planning board, for an approval on what is now effectively a spot lot. Now, the other point, and this, you know, I did raise it at the last hearing, but obviously we are doing this from scratch, was that this property is in the ROP zone. That is actually a multifamily zone. Um, we, they could put apartment buildings in this zone, they could put a lot of many more intense uses than single-family houses. Um, that zone, when single-family is what's being built in it, follows the standards of the R seven five zone. In the R seven five zone, I'm sure the board members recall, a few years back, they changed the lot coverage to thirty-five percent. So if the ROP really follows the standards of the R seven five, the R seven five permits thirty-five percent. Hence, really, what we're asking for is just that this piece, this property be treated as every other R seven five property in Lakewood, which would permit the thirty-five percent. We're asking for thirty-three point seven four percent, which is less than that, and makes sense.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
When did, when the, when the planning board approved the thirty percent lot coverage, was that after the new ordinance went into effect of thirty-five percent in the R seven five zone?
Most certainly it was. But again, we didn't ask for thirty-five percent. We asked for thirty. They're not going to give us what we didn't ask for.
So you don't know that if you would have asked for thirty-two, the planning board would have denied?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fair.
I don't know. I'm pretty confident that they would have granted it, and our life, my life would have been a lot easier than being here for the second time on this, what we thought was going to be a very simple application.
That's fine. I got, I got my answer to the question.
Let me, let me ask to have Glenn sworn at this point, so we can actually present the testimony.
You clarify or firm until the whole system. Actually, to answer your question about whether the planning board may have done, when they approved the original five lot subdivision, one single and two duplexes, those duplexes had, had an average of thirty-six point three percent of lot coverage. So, you had thirty-six point three for, for duplex units, so going down to thirty-three point seven four. One single.
Again, not to cut off Glenn, but I, the point being that it was a no-brainer application. When we came to the planning board and said, "Look, guys, you already approved these four duplex units, which were very dense with a lot of relief, which Glenn will go through all the relief that was requested at that time, we're asking you guys to make this better." Um, this would have been, still with the thirty-three point seven four percent, would have been a lot better than the four units, the eight families that were there. Okay, Glenn, I'm turning it back to.
We've, well, before you continue, I have a question, another question. Why would, why do you think putting in a house ninety feet warm, um, I don't have the, the site plan, how far off the corner is, and what beside that setback is from Route Nine?
Glenn will tell you.
Is a, is a better fit right on the nine?
Because, because.
I want a little bit smaller on the nine. I need trucks.
Well, one second, one second. Mr. Chairman, the duplexes, the duplex, I think, was closer to Route Nine, and the duplex was the same, was the same.
I haven't looked at the duplex. I'm looking at this right now.
But I'm just, I, I just wanted to understand where the planning board was coming from when they granted this approval. The applicant came in there, bought the property, knowing that it would either be used as four duplexes, or better yet, he preferred to use three single-family, to put three single-family homes. He wants single-family homes that are going to work for his family, and judging on the fact that the parents have twelve children, probably they anticipate having large families. So they want a house that's going to work.
Let somebody back.
But I'm going to let Glenn tell you exactly the setbacks, Glenn. I won't cut you off anymore.
We're, we're proposing nineteen-foot run setback on the passing average, which is the same setback that the planning board approved. Um, and the time was that if this was multifamily, which is permitted in this area, like we mentioned, multifamily standard, we could be closer to Route Nine. If you're familiar with it, there's a lot of townhouses that look like you're going to get a couple of copies from somebody as you drive by, they're so close to Route Nine. So this, this lot is actually, you know, this is going to be further away from Route Nine than most of the units on Route Nine. Uh, we're not putting our deck out on Route Nine's side, that would be to the rear of the property. So, well.
So, thank you.
But some things that have been approved in the past are, you know, a row of decks, you know, ten. Some of those seem like a hangover in the right.
And I wonder, would the, would engineer that, that was great and forms where it belongs?
By the way, just so you should know, this is, this is some of the most expensive real estate in the entire township of Lakewood. So, for what it's worth, there are people that want to live in Yushia neighborhood. They don't mind being, butting up to Route Nine. They'll put a fence there, and really don't issue with it.
Okay, go ahead. So what does it go through nine right now? What's your, what, what are you over nine? Nineteen feet over nine?
We're proposing nineteen feet over nine.
Is that what the planning board approved?
That's what the planning board approved.
Nineteen or nineteen-four six?
What are those?
Nineteen's a half, right?
No, we're, we're nineteen. The planning board on the original duplex up there.
What about the original? What type of the same?
We're nineteen, that's what they proposed originally. So we haven't, we haven't changed the front setback.
So the front setback is nineteen, and what's the side setback?
Um, five feet, we just.
Did you change that?
That was also what was approved.
Okay, so what are, where, where are your changes taking place besides the, the extra two percent?
That's the only change.
That's the only change?
Yes.
Nothing else changed. The rear setbacks conforming, front setbacks.
Okay, so how much of it do you have regarding anything you want? What was it, what, what was it, like a single-family proposal, and what is it then?
There were never, there were never units proposed as far as, as far as that application. Although it had been.
Thirty percent.
There's a fifteen-foot rear setback.
Uh, what is it now, fifteen feet?
We were maintaining the fifteen feet.
From the deck or from the wall of the house?
From the deck.
From the deck? Yes.
Does it have a setback several foot?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, what you said, say, break?
Chairman.
Yes.
On what we have as a resolution, we do not provide. It, it appears that the only relief that we saw as part of this zoning application is the building coverage. My building coverage in the resolution, so it's thirty percent.
Right.
Correct. Correct. Which is what was requested.
What you're seeing now is simply a thirty-three point one.
On one lot.
On one lot.
Yeah, just on the corner.
That's my question, correct. Zone isn't three point three percent more than what was approved by the planning board?
On one.
On, on the corner lot.
On the corner lot, that's one.
Right, everything else is staying as it is.
And just one more point I want to clarify, the rear yard setback is conforming and always was conforming. We don't have a variance for rear yard setback.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, anyone who's on, running, you heard on four zero seven eight? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Guys, whatever you want to do with it, please go ahead. Do you have a motion? Yes.
I'd like a motion to approve, uh, application, appeal number four oh seven.
I have a motion from any of the approved? To approve a motion, four oh seven eight. Hold on, yes. Much, yes.
Before making a motion, I would like to make a comment that it is on, it's on corner and it's on Route Nine, and in the resolution, it reflects some language that, that they really have to follow the corners and the site lines, and she, she mentioned that the wiring's something about fence, but visibility is crucial there. So I don't know, we should be having a fence, maybe we shouldn't, there shouldn't be actual landscaping when they go to the corner. I think they should just.
Well, the plans are guaranteed to the corner, to the side triangle.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Maybe any more, you know, I, I just don't know.
No, that's it.
Right, that's standard, the side triangle. Put one fence, you know, when you get a burden back, and then you lose visibility and making a left turn. I'm sorry, I, I came near to your thing. Sorry. But what are we putting in about the side triangle? So, no, the side triangle, we. He's worried about side triangles. Right, and also, um, their, their attorney mentions something about a fence. We should, the, 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 the building partners should be conscious about, you know, making sure that, that, I know that they have to follow the side triangle, but even further than that.
The fence issue unless granted by the zoning board, since it's a front or a setback, it will be a max on a four-foot high.
A four-foot high, and, yeah, and, and, and I don't think they should have vegetation there as well, because then it grows and.
Yeah, they can put up, they can put up these big, um, large trees that grow to twenty, thirty feet high.
So how do we, how do we control, can we put some language in there that they should just?
Time should.
Okay, so I'm looking for a second. A second motion? Second motion from Mashink.
And, and, Terry, just to, you know, when you look at it, just make sure that it looks safe on that, in that, not just visually, but, uh, anybody trying high, warm, anything close to the side triangle.
Yeah, it's in the mixture. Okay. Okay, next. Okay, so we have a motion from there, and a second from Mashink. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Haberson.
Yes.
The Langley.
Yes.
The Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Haberson.
Yes, okay, good night and the block, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move, we're gonna be moving into new business. Uh, Joseph Lipschitz.
Ontario Road Engineer Plan, August twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. Applicant to seeking use variance, we need to construct a two-story and basement, thirty thousand seventy-two square foot mixed-use retail and office space building, for gate access and married and low-risk residential areas.
Does it work though?
Yeah. Four oh eight four, does it look good? Yes.
Okay. Okay. Right. The other side is, yes. Okay. I'm sure from seven.
Where are you at?
I'm at.
You clarify or firm until the whole group tells we got it.
I do, right, by the jacket, the jersey, the professional engineer, professional player. I have three exhibits.
I know, we're starting, I said, I said, generally, we're bringing Brian's job and acclamation.
No, I'm just pointing to which, uh, a focal view, where the location is.
Part, part of what we, we're going to do, what?
Yeah.
Can I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Marion Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant Joseph Lipschitz. Um, this application is for use variance approval to construct a two-story mixed-use retail and office, and office space, and office building on the subject property. I will let Brian, when he takes over, um, tell the board exactly where this property is located along New Hampshire Avenue, but yes, it's across the street from the park. Um, this is a bifurcated application, so all the applicant is seeking tonight is use variance approval. Should the board act favorably this evening, the applicant would need to return to this board for a site plan approval before anything could be built. A basic site plan and architectural plans have been submitted in order to give the board ample information to determine if a use variance is warranted for this use. The idea here is that this area has recently been developed with many, many new homes, many townhomes, um, and there is really no place for the residents to shop, other than coming into the heart of Lakewood, which brings traffic onto the already cluttered Route Nine and New Hampshire avenues. And you know, at most every other meeting, we hear everybody coming in and complaining about how Chestnut Street, you can't get past that, we need a light on the corner because there's so much traffic, and, no, I am so cluttered. So the concept here is to have a neighborhood shopping area with some office space, so that the residents of this area kind of stay in that area, and they don't bring traffic into Lakewood, add into the congestion that we constantly hear all the neighbors complaining about, especially in the Chestnut area, where we, we, we hear about it at almost every meeting. Um, at this point, I guess I'm going to call upon Brian to present the testimony.
I have, uh, three, three, eighty-one. It is a copy of sheet one sixty-nine of the tax map, colored in orange, the subject property. These blue lines are the various zones. We have the R twenty zone, that has the, uh, the senior development, the R twelve eighty zone, which is the, uh, Pioneer's, uh, subdivision. Uh, to the north of us is the B five A, to the northwest of us is the R N zone, uh, and directly across the street is, uh, the, the township park. Uh, at eighty-two is a map that shows a bigger piece of the area, and to describe what Marion was indicating as far as the development, it shows Route seventy, uh, and, and the development that's south of Route seventy. We have the Pioneer's development, which was developed many years ago, and you have three hundred plus twelve units there. Uh, we have the, uh, New Hampshire Commons apartments. Uh, we have, uh, an approval that was granted on Route seventy for another seventy-four development. Uh, we have arrogant, uh, we have, uh, approved and built duplexes and senior developments. Uh, in, in all, we have more than a thousand dwellings in this area, and it really isn't adequate, maybe with shopping opportunities. So, uh, by allowing this to be developed and to request some use, what it allows is that everybody from these thousand families don't have to live in town or go somewhere else for the shopping opportunities that they need, and take the orders for later as well, as the residents that will be in this area, a lot of the women don't drive. So, providing something within walking distance, uh, again, is a benefit. Uh, eighty-three is just a copy of the plan that was submitted, and here it says, just to give the board a concept of showing that the parking works, the, the, the building works here. We understand we have a lot of work to do as far as what is actually what like, but the intent goes to have some, uh, neighborhood retail type of uses and some walkages, so it'll provide place for some people to work and some people to shop without having to drive into Lakewood, uh, with the, the, the traffic in this area is heavy, not as heavy as it is in, in the other parts of New York, apart from Lakewood. Uh, and, and this would, in course, with the smart road plan and, and, and the principles would allow for shopping opportunities, uh, people without having to go to other places. Uh, looking at the report, uh, obviously, the first issue that's raised is the use variance. Uh, in order to get the use variance justification, we go to the master plan, uh, and a two thousand seventeen master plan, position statement on page seven, uh, indicates an encouraged growth development and appropriate locations, uh, and consistent with the status plan. As you look at the, uh, land uses in this area, which are apartments, uh, the B five A across the street, which can have, uh, some, uh, commercial development, in all likelihood, the B five A also allows duplexes, so that you would probably have, uh, retail uses along New Hampshire Avenue, where it's not as conducive for residential and residential duplexes in fact. Uh, New Hampshire Avenue, as we all know, is a, is a very busy road, the Exxon station's on the corner, uh, as you go into Tom Gerber, which is a short distance south of us, again, no, no commercial uses, but very heavily trafficked road. Uh, the, the master plan also says, uh, provide sufficient education for recreational, uh, for the future needs, and, and this is certainly the needs that are, that are, uh, would be accommodated. The Pioneer's area is in, in an area that, twenty ten, and especially along, uh, New Hampshire Avenue, there's, there's a need for redevelopment. It's across the street from the park, so it, it's not going to be adversely impacting any neighbors across the street. There's no development along Locust, uh, to the east. The development that's along the B five A is an office that was approved by this court many years ago, there's an old house that's still there, that's also screening for redevelopment. Uh, and, and the township recently developed, or designated this as B five A, so the smart road plan that was added as a highway, uh, and, uh, if you look at New Hampshire, it qualifies in, in all respects as a highway, that would be an attract, it's there with proximity to Route seventy. Uh, and based on that, it, it might testimony that the master plan is indicating that it's a commercial use, the municipal engine slot in the AC forty-five fifty-five, the GAC, is to encourage municipal action, to guide the appropriate user development, and all aims for the same, and, and which will quote a little state law of general welfare. My testimony that this will promote general welfare by providing, uh, work and, and, uh, shopping, uh, needs, uh, in a local area, as well as reducing traffic going to other facilities that exist in, in its own areas. Uh, again, it says, provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial uses. And this is a, a commercially. uh, needs in a local area, as well as reducing traffic going to other facilities that exist in, in its own areas. Uh, again, it says, provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial uses. And this is a, a commercial use that, in my professional opinion, it'd be it. Uh, and, and certainly the board should act favorably on this. And then we will pass out the detail, we will come back with a plan that satisfies the board's access. This is a property that's on the corner, so you can have access to Locust, to the New Hampshire. It provides the safety interest in interest. We're asking for a, uh, D variance, uh, and it says, in the critical case, in a special reason, grant variance for that departure from, uh, use, uh, in this district. Again, so that's why we're here, we're asking for that departure. And the special reasons are, are because of the master plan. It's a, uh, a general, uh, general on the good, uh, by providing these convenient services. Uh, and, and the board needs to find that, uh, these variants is having granted without assistance, that the public good will not impair the intended purpose of the local, um, normal. Uh, the close proximity to the B five A, the surrounding uses, we might think will satisfy that, and, and with respect to any negative criteria or negative impact, we would certainly, when we came back with, um, a, uh, site plan, the board act favorably by a site plan that's not requesting, all veterans to be, uh, requesting parking, we have adequate traffic circulation that we are helping the traffic situation around the city. Uh, continuing on, uh, the report, uh, comments are, we should provide testimony on the architectural building. If the board acts favorably, I can surely, an architectural building would be beautiful. And everybody that drives by, they'll say, this must have improved the home for you. Uh, testimony should provide, I propose uses, uh, for the retail and the office. And what we've shown is six eighteen-hundred square foot stores. It's going to be the kind of stores that, that are needed in, in, in that area, whether it's a pizza store or a juice store. Uh, testimony should be provided regarding proposed use of lot thirty. And lot thirty is part of it, and the way eight three is drawn, it's showing that it's open. Uh, it's, it's certainly the intent, we, we expect some input from the board on what the board thinks would be appropriate, if they act favorably, we'll wish to come back with. But we would utilize, uh, that lot as well, uh, and cut it out and provide the circulation and whatever else the board feels to see it.
Lot, lot thirty, it's not being shown on this plan there, but the intention is to have stuff. Did the?
That been acquired of it more recently, which is why it wasn't shown on the plan. But it will be part of the site plan when we come back, should the board vote favorably. That lot will be included, and we will use that for additional parking and circulation to make a nice plan that the board will feel comfortable approving.
Are you also planning on putting in additional stores in all the spaces in this spot? For a bank or a freestanding zone?
Um, we certainly, we certainly be looking for, uh, direction from the board on the types of uses, if they act favorably in the application. Uh, and, and your, your, as Marion indicates, the schedule is originally done without that lot. That lot is in, which just makes it easier to be flexible, uh, on, on the elaborate.
It's easier to be flexible if you don't add what that's in?
Well, we would certainly expect the board to indicate us whether they felt was appropriate or not appropriate, if the board acts favorably on use. The, the use that we're asking for is retail on the first floor, office on the second floor, providing sufficient parking, uh, and, and all the other amenities that Lakewood has been afforded.
But it's really hard for me to know that I like what I see, that I don't know what's coming in.
Well, to address one of your questions, a bank wouldn't qualify as retail on the first floor, so we'd have to come back, that would require a new use, that would require a separate use variance.
But, but you're not asking me for a use variance, um, as size ability, you're asking blanket use variance.
Well, you could dictate to what's the size.
Office here, and let the site on site, how big, how small, so on and so forth.
You could.
The testimony you used of the site plan comes, but I heard that it will not be any bulk variance.
Correct. Right, for the site plan. So I don't know what's coming in on this site. So you just told me it should be more flexible, I can't, I don't want it to become flexible.
Well, well, with the caveat that we're not going, the caveat is that we're not going to seek bulk variance relief. Not, we're not taking parking relief, and we're not taking setback relief, so.
Certainly, you're not going to deal with a lot of parking, but it only goes with the site.
So if, first of all, yes, if there's going to be a freestanding bank, yeah, it's a matter of.
There's enough.
So if, uh, if, if the board, if it lacking any input from board, I would say we probably add another store, so we have seven, and we add additional parking to accommodate that and look similar in character, uh, to the, the rest of the, the concept plan. The concept plan was just a concept that without a store, it's going to be the type of stores that don't be a, not a supermarket, so.
You're not putting in a box store here, a twenty thousand, ten, twenty thousand?
No, no box store.
What size, in your mind, in your vision, um, what size store do you want to put it in?
Eighteen hundred square foot.
Eighteen hundred square foot.
Which doesn't mean that somebody can't combine two of them and have a thirty-six hundred square foot store, but we're not putting in, no, we're not looking for the super.
And you see the parking, the way it's set up, doesn't provide for tractor trailers.
That was the next question, and we've got, I was going to comment that, because you have no room for trucks to make any deliveries there. Based on this, um, layout, so I can say this right now, that this will not look to me on a later off, because there's no place for trucks to make deliveries.
If, if the board acts favorably on this application, the applicant would look for prospective tenants, and he would know what those prospective tenants need, uh, and, and he would accommodate a site plan that, yes, it's not going to look like this. We all agree, it's not going to be a concept, there's going to be parking in front, parking in back, building in the middle, a place for the residents to walk to, and, and some that works upstairs and some in the, uh, shop downstairs, obviously, he's working downstairs as well, working downstairs as well.
What do you do with this? So maybe you're basing it on.
Storage.
Storage, or, or, we don't have a basement for offices?
Not renting out.
Or a whole room, or social walls?
Storage for the stores, um, you can't rent stores today without storage space.
Really?
All the, trust me, I do, I do at least.
How about when you have storage space, and then you put some, um, um, containers down all over, and then you say, oh, sorry, I had no space?
It's going to be used for storage.
You know, and then you put it outside the box, so.
It's storage space under the.
Really? And you're telling me what's our playground, and you're telling me they can't do that? Why?
As, as, as the storage officer said, that can't be done legally, so.
I know that.
We wouldn't talk about.
Let me tell you something, there are a few rotten apples in the town that ruin it for everyone in town, okay?
Yes.
Uh, and that's why I mean.
No, no, I, I understood.
With a very critical eye.
It could be stipulated, those basements will be used as storage spaces.
Wow, stipulated.
The residential area, what's to the east of this? Those houses there, just kind of butt right up into a housing development?
The, is the orange, uh, on eight one, the orange in the site, these lots along Locust Street are undeveloped. There is a, a white, uh, fortunate, so a good part of this will never be developed. The lower area is Pioneer's and R twelve eight, twelve thousand square foot lot, and they're typically, uh, one-story type of houses, and they were built a long time ago.
What's that rightly, I'm going to be sorry, what's that rightly, I mean, on the left row, on that lot? No, that's right.
Here, this is all Pioneer's. It's one, two, three, four roads.
You're going to improve.
R twelve over eight thousand square feet.
You're going to improve Locust, is it going to become, is it going to go to a dead end?
Locust dead end right now.
Yeah, dead, dead end's right on the half.
Yes.
So.
We, we would, we would be improving the Locust in front of our thing, and we would have a, a hammerhead turnaround at that point. Uh, so that we would have vehicles that would come into Locust and go out of Locust as you come out of the traffic lane. Uh, we have a traffic engineer, if the board acts favorably, we work with the county with the traffic engineer, and we come back and we show you how this is going to work out.
How many houses are going to be coming down and put this up? There's currently a house on the property, right?
Uh, I, I think there's three.
By the way, just, just for the record, this is another side that's coming down the road.
Number seven?
Yeah.
I'm just going to use chairs as a current.
Through the chair, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
As you know, I'm usually a big fan of Lakewood.
Yes.
I just have a concern of putting this up right on an, on an artery. This is a main artery, township, that connects the Lakewood to Tom River. It's, it's one of the escape routes from Lakewood to Tom River, and backs into Lakewood. And there's always traffic on that corner. Um, I'm not sure that the best use of would be to, uh, add retail at this location. I know that I prefer rateable, that, uh, uh, at this location, everybody from that area will be going, uh, into, uh, at, at a busy intersection, will be bringing a lot of traffic.
But, but where else would you put retail if not on a busy road? You're not going to put retail on the side street.
I have Route seventy, instead of putting townhouses there, I put, uh, retail.
Well, our, our client doesn't have property, and I don't have property here. And, and to that.
Usually, you know, usually I'm a big rateable, but I'm not sure.
I think, I think this neighborhood needs, uh, hotels, living room, pool. So on top of it being a rateable, uh, it's something that people can walk to. Uh, because the people that are going to drive to shop, they can be driving anyway, whether, whether they drive out of here and drive past there and go into Frank or.
I'm just saying, we're going to bring, uh, twenty thousand square feet, and bring all those people to that location.
I don't, I don't think you're going to be bringing people from Lakewood that already has plenty of shopping to a pizza store here, there's much better pizza around here.
No, but, but again, the, the concept here is to have these smaller stores.
I just wanted to drop for a moment here. Um, I, I hear what, what you're saying, but I'm also big fan of putting a center node in a very dead end to keep the local shopping, not the major shopping, but your local ideas in your local thing. The question is, how big of a shopping center will I want to consider local? And how big of a shopping center will I say, okay, this is going to bring outside people, which don't go in this neighborhood, to shop at this store? And if we create traffic, what much is that considering? That's what I'm thinking about.
Which is exactly what.
I, I'm very big in favor of keeping a, a, a small, um, strip with. You know, we have all the essentials for the community to utilize.
That's the concept. The concept is to have a dry cleaners there, to have a pizza store there, to have those.
However, I, I see this as a little bit larger than that concept.
Not if the stores are small stores. But not if the stores are small stores. We're not looking, they're not looking to put large stores here, they're not putting a supermarket here. The, the, the idea really is for it to be that, that center node, exactly.
Uh, Jerry, maybe this should be combined.
Maybe, if we, uh, if we approve of retail, we can put a limit to the size of the store.
If you lose, I, that's right, you approve retail.
Correct.
That's one, the size of the store not to be more than two thousand, twenty-five or three thousand.
Well, the test point is they're going to be about eighteen hundred square feet.
Test point is, they, they provide two together that have thirty-six hundred.
Well, and so.
So no, we're trying to say, not to make big box stores, but to keep smaller stores there, eighteen hu, no larger than. Eighteen hundred, because that what's going to stop, first of all, taking eighteen hundred, not three four.
But, but, first of all, I just spoke to the applicant, and the applicant indicated that he doesn't need to have any extra stores on that additional space. He has no problem keeping it to the size and the size of, the number of stores that were referenced in the plan. I just, I do have a little bit of an issue with limiting the size. What we're envisioning in this shopping center is probably a children's shoe store. These women don't drive, they need a place that they can walk to get their children's shoes.
I understand.
The shoe store might want to have a store there that's bigger than eighteen hundred square feet.
I understand. Mrs. Weinstein, if we give you, according to, after what I understand from past applications, and from what I am hearing from Jerry, is that if we give you retail, what stops you from taking the whole ten thousand square feet to one bingo, who's a boss?
Okay, maybe I can help. I live there. Many years. To, to solve, I think to solve the issue, I like this application, to solve the issue in my case, because I live there, and to answer your questions. They have a whole supermarket on Route nine, you see, Route four, that they actually built. Okay, it used to be a, a shopping shop, and it went, the shopping shop went to Tom River. So this whole area, this whole now area has become a quote shopping center for the people in this area that's on Route nine, across the street from the, uh, from the development that they're doing now, which is the new lines of. Right. And, and also from the Jim Curly, that area? All right, so you have the whole shopping center that had the large now.
Shopping shop moved out of there.
Shopping shop moved out of there, now they have a shop that has. Do you know the GPS that you guys had here?
NPDS, you mean NPDS.
NPDS, they moved it there. NPDS moved, they're part of the park, yes. Okay, so they have.
Yeah, at Tigo Square.
Tigo Square.
Those are very tiny.
So they have, Tigo Square, so they had a place now.
But that's Route seventy, that's like the, the.
That's what. Yeah, but they, it's too big.
Yeah, but, but there is a supermarket, there's a closer supermarket, there's Yankos.
You're just wanting to say that, that a supermarket that's going to be here, is going to be completely that supermarket. Because they walk or not, they walk. And not all that, that has multiple stores, not just supermarkets.
We don't have a problem if you put in a resolution that there can't be a supermarket on the side. We're not looking.
I'm just saying, I don't think it's anything that would.
That there can't be a supermarket, yes. But I don't, but I don't want to limit it to eighteen hundred square feet, because I just want to hear that. If the shoe store, if the children's shoe store wants to have more than eighteen hundred square feet, we want a children's shoe store there, we want possibly a children's clothing store there. Stores that these women who don't drive can walk to.
How about there is a hundred square feet?
What?
Not more than a double store?
Yeah, not more than a double store.
Will you put that in the resolution?
We keep referring to people walking, I don't see people walking.
Let me tell you, I know the community didn't get on Locust Road, what I should have been saying. They, they, the women, they don't drive.
I understand.
They really, they really don't overdrive.
I don't think the wife has.
Well, then, then.
They have the owners, they know how to pay.
Okay, okay, my concern, guys, guys, my concern, and back to my, my original concern about the bad apple that moves everything for the town, how do I know that in the middle of residential neighborhood, this won't become a, a sore thumb and, and a big hazard and a big traffic problem like, like we see, uh, others that walk it, that need a supermarket?
Well, this isn't really the stage that we can even, that we can really focus on that, because that would come at the site plan stage. But we've definitely heard the board's concerns, and we've taken your guidance. And obviously, when we go back to the drawing board to draft the site, the site plan, we're going to have to take all of these things into, into concern, because otherwise, we won't get approved on the site plan.
And, and, and you know, there's a number of these places standing there, we denied it. You remember, you recall, you know, at, at, and, and. One thing I can tell you is, this thing is better than a lot of others. You have two acres in, out of this.
You have Locust, that, that's parked out.
Which, 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 which traffic can flow. No, this is dead end, I guess. Yes, this, so, yes, that, again, again, it'll, it'll, it'll move traffic. You don't, if you only do a, a, a right turn, you can make a left, you can make a right turn.
No, he's correct, you won't be able to make a left. Right, right. Yeah, correct, for sure.
All right, let me open the public, four zero eight four, if anyone in the public wants to be heard, please step up.
Mr. President, if you raise your right hand, you prefer.
Hi, Frank.
Can you spell your full name, please?
A R O Y, H R R C H. Um, I was wondering, you're talking about the possibility of restrictions, um, just because I was, I was at it as well.
There are no restrictions there.
One forty-six times there.
Thank you.
Is there an option of even putting restrictions on tractor trailers on there over there? And maybe that, the structure that, I know people, I, I know what happens, but obviously, the rules are, are rules. Is there an option of doing that?
I'll answer your question, I want to say that.
Well, that, I'm just trying, let's talk about, if there is a supermarket, whether it's one of these from there, Yankos, which I care, just relatively for that community, which I'm just trying to think, also rateables, which is part of that, that residential. Um, if that's a possibility, building a residential, that's a great, if we can figure out something like that, obviously, we don't want to kill it, this means, this is not a supermarket, whether it's one of these.
This means there's no supermarket that you want to be from, and you want, I get what you're doing, appreciate it. So you don't want to put a couple of money in traffic, that could have come out right away.
So to answer your question on tractor trailer type of business, there's no way I can predict when a place is ordered, how it's gonna be delivered, if it's gonna be in a straight truck or a tractor trailer. So whoever orders product, whoever's in here, let's use the pizza shop. He orders a couple pallets of flour, it's coming out in a tractor trailer. It's not coming in a straight truck.
Even one pallet.
He, he, he orders one pallet. I cannot predict, I, I don't dictate to the shipper how you send it. So yeah, there's the...
It has to accommodate, it has to be able to accommodate.
And therefore, and therefore, if this is not gonna prove, we have to make sure that the traffic flows where the tractor trailer do pull in, pull out, and then it all has to work, or else, and it doesn't alleviate any parking and create, and create a parking matter as...
Mr. Chairman, can you raise your right hand? You affirm that you have the whole...
Yes.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last?
Sherman Sol, S O L O F F.
S O?
L O F F. Fifty-six, I Rose Hill, Lakewood.
No, Rose Hill.
I Rose Hill and Brooklyn.
Not Benzen though.
I'm on the other end of town, but my...
The area?
Yeah. I'm hell. My children, my children go to school a couple of blocks away from that property. Corner of New Hampshire, Route 70. Unfortunately, they've missed a dozen many times from their public property. I do live on County Line Road area, and I could say that, looking back, I am a resident twenty-five years ago in Lakewood. And looking back on County Line Road, it looked narrower, but it looked calm and quiet like New Hampshire Avenue now, I'm saying it's busy, but the thoroughfare is not too many residents. And the community has grown, and many more residents in town. And County Line Road was a residential, is a residential, and you... And imagine if it would not be approved by this board, let's say, a store like Costa Village. I would have to go down to the gourmet block, Route 9. All my neighbors, thousands of houses over there, I would say a hundred, but at this point, probably thousands of residents living there, to go down until they forget about milk, or for whatever you forgot. I do go probably once a week on that, but mostly I stay in my, in my area. This is an opportunity now for the board on New Hampshire Avenue. Before it gets really developed, it gets hundreds and thousands of residents. It seems like it's gonna get more and more developed, the more residents moving in behind the thoroughfares. I mentioned before, I mentioned it as well, that to keep traffic in place to put it on the thoroughfares, not on the... So if this would be zone commercial right now, and the applicant would be standing there, say, I want to build a residential, with decks backing up on New Hampshire Avenue, it would be hands down, say, no. Just before it's right up to residential, the proper thing to do is, is talk to like this, with the residents coming in. It should be...
So I'll answer you on that, okay? Usually, I don't answer an applicant, but I will answer you. If this application would be at the beginning of residential neighborhood, like the first corner, if you take the block over there, whatever, the beginning of, of two blocks higher, where the residential starts, you wanna throw it in there, that's one thing. But if you're taking it in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and you're putting it in, that's another thing. So everything has to have its place and its right place with, with the put. Especially when you know that in town, people won't know how to keep these sites nice and clean. Where traffic...
Keep your bombs, what you got.
When, when, when the traffic, when the traffic is just gonna back out, out onto New Hampshire, or lucky, Locust has a consistent light right now, but that's a saving grace, because I know I can rely on the traffic government. I can't, I can rely on this other driveway, because I would not like to make a, a, a left turn to cross over New Hampshire, because that's gonna become a hazard. So we got some safeguards to put in it, but I still wanna see that this site does not end up like the other sites in town that we use as a trial, and it ends up like looking like a dump. That is my concern. And all of a sudd, one second, I'm ready to make. And all of a sudden, I find out that there's a power compactor in one of the spots that we, that we designed, that becomes an awning and a receiving area, because we can't receive product properly. So we all of a sudden take away another five spots to create an awning and roll down gates. And all of a sudden, in the driveway, we put in a few more parking spots. We slide in spots in a nice twenty-eight...
That's a good, that's a good thing, I'm gonna have them on the road.
Yeah, right, I know. You can, you, I'm lucky that they didn't put it right in the middle of the road. And then, you know, and everything starts, and a couple of garbage dumpsters, because this man can't put his garbage and walk a little extra, few extra feet to his garbage, the garbage dump, which is designated as a corner over here, so he's gonna put it in another, take away another parking spot. And now that he can create all these parking spaces, I can't get the stuff down to the basement and the storage too hard. We're back in handling. So we put that in a container. And what happened to the end?
But on the top, it's...
Use imagination.
Looking closer, just photographing, have, have the, have the party. So...
This is closer to the store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and it's very clear that our place is likely, always gonna have a good avenue around now.
This is a big yard.
And I gotta mention that, that this is the applicant, that all the people do not come to the applicant. The people close, the owners close to the corner, do not come to the applicant. They probably do not come to the zone residential, not show exactly where it's more financially better to do residential now. Probably the management of the residential or that old one, decided to go, which we don't want to do without applicants coming down. But otherwise, this is the applicant, we can have a property for...
Mr. Solomon, I would agree that this product does belong there, I'm gonna say it belongs there. Does belong in... I, I agree that a center node is required in these type of neighborhoods to keep the traffic off from coming into the town in the morning, you need traffic, you get nine twenty, grab something. You don't wanna come, be able to start to buy stuff, you can go anywhere else. You're right, everyone should stay within, walking distance, within a minute drive from your house to go get it. So you don't have to keep traffic flowing down into the car and then go down and down. You wanna keep traffic out, so everyone else can move and move safely. I agree with that. And that's the only positive thing when I'm looking at it, that it should, that should work. But I'm very nervous that it shouldn't end up becoming a, a, a mess. And that's what I have to look at. And that's gonna be, and if it does get approved, I'm gonna be very rigid on the site plan. By the way, when you bring your kids late to school, you can go shopping in the site.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, you did raise one, one, one valid point that I didn't think of, which is, which was the decks on County Line Road, which then, you know, we have to come back to this board and get approved.
Who's wrong with the public? Hey, is that one of the public? Anyone else in the public wanna say something on this application? Seeing none, we close the public. Guys, make a decision. And can I have a motion?
I, I agree with both of, of the chairman's comments, Adam O'Shea, whereas it would be a bit of a hassle where we're putting a really big number of disasters. So unless this is overkill of parking, and we have to know where garbage is gonna go, and traffic flow, and all that, you know, then one of the would come to the site plan, you know, I...
Can I, if we want to put a motion, if we want to put a motion to approve, I'd like to put that motion to that. Zero restrictions, size of building, number of parking, we would have full control on the site.
Well, the guy in the chair, going forward, who was, we said, there will be a site plan that requires no embarrasses, no parking issues. And a site plan approval would be a condition of this, for instance, if for some reason you weren't satisfied with the site plan application, then we use variants before.
Those are important. But what I even want to happen is that you tell me later, we put in a, we get used variants without any embarrasses, and he still don't like what they put in, even though it doesn't require any embarrasses.
We want to overkill. That will have to comply with the zoning laws.
We want, we want to have an open check of...
That's what Jerry's saying. If the used variants is not, if they don't get the site, then the use falls away. That's what Jerry's saying.
Yes, well, Jerry was saying that we have to attach this, the used variants, to some code.
No, that's not... The site plan application would have to comply with your zoning laws.
Because the...
It's always... Not another part of the...
What I mean saying is that it's a condition, if, if you don't like the site, then it's...
The whole thing falls away, you have to settle over again.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I, I think this is a residential area, this is not a commercial area, it doesn't belong. And I don't understand why people don't talk here, we don't specify on traces, three miles, four miles. So I definitely don't...
Okay, I, I still think that you need a center node over there for shopping.
Somewhere, we don't like...
Somewhere over there, you know, that's the payment, that would be my...
I'll be honest with you, only in Lakewood where you have Route 70, which is all commercial, it's all town, I mean, anyways.
All right. So if one of you, I'm taking a motion to deny. Okay, I have a motion to deny.
A second.
Who's that? I have a second from Hal Harris. That's second, they're all voters. Yeah, yes, you are approving for the denial, no means you are approving.
Yes, vote for the motion means the application is denied.
Correct. That's what you said.
She both believe each other.
Yes, you have the act of denying.
Mr. Yeller?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Okay, we'll come back.
Mr. Inger?
Before I vote, if we're not happy with the site plan, then they lose the...
Lose.
Completely.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm already at a two hours later, can't come back and say, hey, I...
I will be...
At this point, as I said, you have two votes against the application. So they're not gonna get five votes in favor of the application, so the application's gonna be denied. Because if you afford to vote against the law, votes who are positive ones are considered negative.
What, you got six members, six minus two is four.
You won't have five votes for in favor of the user.
You don't vote no, the pleasure.
I still have Mr. Langley, Mr. Inger, Mr. Gonzalez. Do I have an answer?
Yeah. I don't like bifurcated applications, where we have a problem here. And you said this time and time again, when you're coming before us, okay? I know it goes many times in here, but this is a situation where we should be looking at the whole plan, so we can vote intelligently, if it belongs and goes to all the situations, I'll put one by, by the table. So I'm voting yes, as far as my answer.
Okay, so you don't need to vote. Mr. Harrison?
Doesn't make a difference. I will no.
Mr. Inger?
Um, no.
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 Mr. Langley? No?
Um...
Maybe?
No, no. I, I, I think, if I understand what Obie was saying, is that you might vote yes, if you saw...
If I saw what's going on, we've done this over and over again. We have problems with bifurcated applications.
They can reapply.
Yes.
We have problems with bifurcated applications.
They can reapply to the site plan.
Okay. Okay. Fine. Fine, motion denied, sorry. Okay, moving forward. We're gonna take a ten minute break, and when we come back, we're gonna go into appeal number forty-ten A. Congregation Motors, no. What?
No. It's always... Give them what they want, give them... This kind of do, this kind of... How you want, how you... How you use the manager, how are you...
Me and a friend a little... Special. Special. Who wants to say?
Doesn't get...
So one second. So, stop smoking. Special. Imagine...
Pass those to my level.
You better down smoke.
Sit there, boy, which one do you want to pass? I have to... What happened to that?
I haven't seen... Oh, this is good. They can go far where they can direct. This is a trade company, this is a real... So, you done? You got it? And what's the... Yeah, I guess so much. Love you a little bit. Play off, play off. Third, Mr. Green. I don't believe...
Just the line.
What's your... What's going on, sorry?
Twenty-five... The first one's a tie. He's delayed. So it's not one more... Let me pause that one for a second. You know what, if you're safe, we... Yeah, and then you... But it's almost, we worked it out. It's a lot more. Please just have me so just spend that chance. If you smell the wine. It's a shake tonight, I'm sure.
And the rush, the rush is, yeah, waiting, making the process with the pressure. I think it's inside. But obviously, yeah. So it's also a pressure. And I'll. See, I'm sorry. How about this? Can you like, uh, like eighty? I was a big man in the day. I believe that it's all much. What are you saying? The mission is based on. What? I said, so you have. And I said, I thought it. I don't know. I feel like this is probably nothing. They're trying to. And I said, it's a, it's a. I mean, the thought that we can. We're thinking. You understand this? That way I don't say. Now, some. That is a. With mayor by yourself. I just. I'm going to watch a lot of movies. We got forty-six years in Lakeview. Having a break yet? Yeah. They want to lie about their. Yeah. They want to see. Mr. Havens, you want to see your perception? Land. It was not my life. What a problem. Right? Come on, first. I just. Tell you. For all the great experts. Yeah. Right. Or she put it in the ground. He answered. That's a guy. Basically, it wasn't sweet. That's for sure. But frankly, I don't know what's deep in my head. It's even. Yeah. Boys. What is it? Yes.
He's a guy.
Yeah. He's a shooter. Now, he's not. He's a poor guy. They got a. No. That's it. Yes, and part of. Right? There's no sort of. He's very strange. Yeah. Right there. You know, it's good problem. Right? Sure. Women don't pass. That's easy. I mean, that's. Right. You're a surgeon. Right. I play ball. Well, you had a good one, but maybe not within the whole run. They didn't have that one course. What shape it seems like. And actually, uh, didn't have to. You love the truth. Now, we're going to change. Seven, seven, four, nine. So we got to. Four. Very much. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I. Were you pretty rare? Were you guys not happy? Yeah, well, yeah. Okay, there's a portion of the. Oh, yes. I love the question. Yeah. I do get a lot of. Close on. Wow. Yeah, let's see. It's much. Michelle, any of them? Yeah, I got. I'll just. The motion also has a certain response. So. Yeah. The Yankee child calls the power. Power. I wish. I wish. I like, I showed the original, uh, the original. I don't like it. No. First. Or. I love it. Do it. Believe it. You know, she's. You're walking. Sick? No, I'm not a sushi. I think so. I'm buying the other. I'm taking her money. Yeah. She doesn't help him. But I can't help him. You could not do on application alive. I just got an application. The store. Yeah. I'm going to. So much. Love the camera. Result, that's all of this. From the guns I was doing. I feel that I'm sorry. It probably is several times. Generation Americans. It's a good door of gold. It's a golden can. Over going. It's a good answer. So. His grandfather. Well, maybe that was his. His grandfather's name. His grandfather's name was also. His grandfather's name was a show, great example. Calm. So that's the city. At the. Actually, my cousins. Should we go with? I think it's generation. Wait, now. I don't know. Not yet, grandmother's change. Father's mother's change. Yeah. My. Mother. One is that that. In them, Finn. It's a good end. Those can affect the spirits through same as. The image of the famous dying or. Originally, since it's in the. The. Gratitude. 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 Gratitude, it's given to men in. In spirit. Jesus. The. The. That's a great light. It's a, it's the army. It's a very good. Yeah, I think. That's what we're going to manage. I'm going to. Best. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting the. Game. We're on fire. Yeah, we're on fire. Why don't you stay? It's pretty much kind of.
Here.
What?
Jerry.
What? So. No.
Yes, thank you.
I took off. Feel from right. You have this. Done. Yeah, I'm done. There's a word. I'm. I'm.
I need some pen for this. They have. Our devils. We have. Not come to my. You don't have. Happy ground. Going for happy drug. We have. Jelly. Jelly bears. Anybody happy, you have a beer?
It's not fair. The question, I think, I think, well, he doesn't see, doesn't envision it. Can. Really, it's all like that.
Any, any kind of? Are you done? Happy going, Pierce?
Yeah. Yeah. Not yet. You give. Yeah. I. My. My. My grandmother, my mother.
I'm watching.
I'm very fine. Actually. Some of you. It's a moment. Yeah. It's always. There's a. I think it does. Yeah, the whole. My grandmother.
Can you go over your office? I'm.
I'm.
Where you go?
Yeah.
The hall? No, it's. They walk in the door. Bye. Haha.
I really.
Shit. Yeah, they don't.
Very good. Need a break, be early.
All right.
Oh, you don't. Normally. All the list. What did you know? No, please. I said, listen. Who was all this? Look at how. Oh, because that little house was all. All the. Yeah, they still. Especially. Well, that's. Everyone heard. Yes. Okay, what's the matter? Can we go?
Wait, Jerry.
Hold on. I have something.
Okay. Talk down a bit.
Hi. Um. I. Do you have to say? Get out. I'm. How they. Ready? I got. No, I'm. I'm. Yeah, more. Say.
Okay.
Ah.
Why?
You're fine. You? Yeah, it's nice. Huh? Oh. How? Okay.
I'm ready. Fran, you ready? Uh, can you hear me again? We will move forward into appeal number four zero one zero eight. Congregation Morrisna's. Madam Secretary, can you read the record?
One nineteen fifth street, lot sixty-nine, lot five, ROP zone. Interpretation for determination as to whether the use of the property. Lot sixty-nine, lot five, parking vehicle for lot sixty-nine, lot eight, is a valid, non-performing use.
Yeah, just so the record's up. Chairman, I'd like to. Just so the record's, uh, clear. I'm speaking with hundreds of thousands around two years ago. However, in terms of the joint parking or some. And I've indicated to you that there is no need for work. And we will not set any expert questions. Each adjutor will have opportunities to present their case. They represent the rule of law, speaking and encyclopedias, they have a doctrine.
Right now, I'm.
So at that time, they gather.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think the chairman, that is more. Uh, I have to go to the conversation. Which order. Uh, I probably did only a couple of answers. So. There's a link. I want to say first that I do agree with the appeal as it was listed on the agenda. Because it states determination by this board has to be made whether the use of the property. Block sixty-nine, lot five, or the parking vehicle, block sixty-nine, lot eight, is a valid, non-performing use. Uh, I submit a series of documents, if one was assured. But the reason, our business, as I had a certain, uh, cut. What is must be established first, I'm giving you the policy is that the West side, it exists in the only order this country, going back to nineteen thirty. Of course, also have the municipal name law. And this use, uh, did not come alive until about nineteen seventy-two or so. So, uh, our position is this is not in fact a valid, non-performing use. This is a non-performing use purely, and under, uh, section sixty-eight of the statute. If this board determines that it's not, then they cannot after the parking lot there of my client's property. Now, you submit a series of photographs, I have a few of them here. This is the aerial photograph from two thousand and fifteen.
A one.
A one.
Here we go now.
Before importantly, uh, this is an aerial photograph going back to the year nineteen seventy-nine.
Which one?
This will be right on there. Now, we also introduce and show to you the, uh, the site plan. Site plan that was before the government was just like nineteen seventy-two, that's on the. What is important, you're seeing nineteen seventy-nine, is that this, of course, reflects the addition that was the subject matter on the application in nineteen seventy-two. This is the area that we are talking about. This area right here.
Excuse me, uh, I'm sorry, it's actually short, but Fran, any area? Is that a little?
Not very good.
Uh, can you break up? Yes.
Okay, can you hear me now? Uh. This area over here reflects the site in question. This is Sixth Street over here, this is Fifth Street over here. This is the congregation Sons of Israel, which is on this small, attentive piece right here. Uh, lot five contains the congregation, which was the school, as well as a parking lot over here. In addition to that, there is a parking lot over here, which is known as lot six, that is owned by congregation Sons of Israel, utilized both by then for their congregants and also used, uh, with their permission, uh, by the, uh, the Rudest. The area that we're talking about is right over here. This is a concrete courtyard. As we were to. Set to the aerial photograph, you will actually see that there is a concrete walkway here, going from Sixth Street to the school, which is where the entrance way to the school is. So we get concrete, concrete, but in addition to that, there is a clearly defined walkway going from the sidewalk, uh, to the school. It's back in nineteen seventy-nine. Now, we've also introduced a series of photographs, which I'll get into briefly. What I think, what I would urge the board to take note of, is that in this photograph, as in all of the photographs, and I'm going to show you about seven or eight of them, there is not a car parked, not a car parked in the area of the courtyard that is owned by the school. Not a single car, over space of fifteen years, not over longer than that, but not until this matter arose back in about nineteen, rather, two thousand and ten or twelve, when Yosefsen bought this property at a bankruptcy court. A certain portion of this property you see over here is in fact owned by congregation Sinsabel. It's a small strip right over here, and they, from time to time recently, have been parking cars there. But it's on their property, not on the property owned by congregation Yosefsen. Now, what is even more important, when you look at the site plan, there is not a curb cut on the property, which is owned by congregation Yosefsen. It's just simply curbed. There is no curb cut. There is not a curb cut placed on either of these pieces of property until after the year two thousand. So anybody who wants to get over onto the congregation Yosefsen's property, take an ingress on a curb cut, present on the Sons of Israel property, then make a right-hand turn, go in a westward direction, and there have been parking over here. There are no parking lanes. There are no parking aisles. There is no fire lane. There is no setback. There is nothing to in any way represent to the world that this ever was a parking lot. And on top of that, it is not a permitted use in this zone. Because what we have here is an adjacent property owner, congregation Sons of Israel, who is not parking on their property, but rather, they are parking on the property of my client. Now, with regard to congregation Sons of Israel, I personally visited the municipality on several occasions, searched through the records. A gentleman, I think his name right now, Mr. Siegel, was with me one day. He got me into the computers, and that is when I turned up the site plan that was made a part of this exhibit back in nineteen seventy-two. That was the first time we saw a plan in, with regard to the application of Yosefsen in nineteen seventy-two. It was an application for the extension of this. The resolution of approval clearly showed that they were not seeking any additional parking for congregation Yosefsen, maybe rather congregation Sons of Israel. As a matter of fact, I've included in my package notices which were sent to the synagogue. They appeared at the hearings, and on the record, they clearly stated that congregation Yosefsen, who was before the zoning board, were insufficient parking, insufficient parking, that they, the school, could have the benefit of utilizing the parking which was on their Lot Six to aid then in satisfying any parking needs. There is absolutely nothing in that resolution that in any way intimates or establishes that congregation Sons of Israel secured any parking as a result of that resolution. If you search all through the records, if you make all your oppery questions, it was even a letter from Mr. Bassett, there is not a record, a document, a piece of paper in this municipality which shows that the congregation Sons of Israel ever applied for a building permit, ever applied for a site plan, ever went to a hearing, ever had a resolution of approval. Absolutely nothing. Now, is that strange? Of course it's strange. But the fact of the matter is, there is not one piece of paper that in any way establishes that Sons of Israel has any written approval from the township or bakery to pass on this property. Not one piece of paper showing how they can do it. And many of you I know, obviously residents of this municipality, and have been present at the site, particularly perhaps in morning hours, you also, of course, know the history of the site, know what's been going on there for the last twenty-five years. When one goes to this site in the morning hours, and when one looks at some of the photographs which we have shown to you, it's truly, it's almost indescribable. Because what you have are cars coming across the curb line on Sixth Street to park in this parking lot. You've got cars which are facing west, you've got cars that are facing east, cars facing south, and cars focusing north. There's no one out there to guide them, to tell them where to park. They're crossing over the entire parking area, leaving their cars in various spaces. And when this matter was first raised, the issue was that there are elderly congregants who want to enter the ingress and ingress to the synagogue over here, rather than in the back. Now, do you remember, there's a parking?
Yes.
Let's try to cut to chase. I mean, let's talk about what your application is asking.
My application is asking that there is legally not a parking lot there, it cannot remain there.
That's on your end.
Funny?
Let me read to you the application. This is an application for A, an interpretation as per NJSA forty colon fifty-five capital D dash seventy A and B, and/or an application for determining slash certificate as per NJSA forty colon fifty-five capital D dash sixty-eight, as to whether the use of a property, Lot Five, for parking of vehicles for Lot Eight, is a valid nonconforming use. Now, let me try to help out a little bit here. Let's look at it. Well, I'm going to help my client. First, you're talking about subsection seventy A and seventy B.
I'll read sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, let's read sixty-eight. Now, we, you know, in this, per your letter. You've asked this board to determine under section sixty-eight if this is a valid or therefore if not an invalid, nonconforming use. You agree in your, you state in your letter that the zoning ordinances and legal were adopted sometime in the thirties, and this, these properties were both built in the sixties or seventies, right? Let's look at the first paragraph of section sixty-eight. Any nonconforming use or structure? You got it? Section sixty-eight, first paragraph. Any nonconforming use or structure existing at the time of the passage of an ordinance may be contained. Now, you know, question that both of these buildings were not constructed at the time that the township adopted the ordinances, zoning ordinances, in the thirties. That paragraph, therefore, doesn't help you. It doesn't apply. Because you're not talking, you're talking about a structure which was constructed after the zoning board, or zoning boards. Right?
I don't follow your reading.
Well, let's try it again. Any, any, follow the, let's read the, follow the vast ball here. Any nonconforming use or structure which exists at the time of the passage of the ordinance may be contained. This one doesn't.
So, that means it can be contained, I was.
That means, that means if section sixty-eight doesn't apply, that paragraph is what you're requesting. Now, let's look at the second paragraph. A prospective purchaser, prospective owner gene or any other person interested in laying upon it a nonconforming use or structure exists. We've already determined, per this definition, that this does not meet the definition of a nonconforming use of structure, since it was built after the zoning boards, not before the zoning boards. May apply, well, which you've done, for the issuance of any certification, certificate, certifying that the use or structure existed before the adoption of the ordinance. It didn't. It didn't. It didn't exist before the ordinance was adopted. Therefore, this section doesn't apply to what you're asking.
I don't know. I just don't follow.
Hold that one, hold, hold. Tell me, tell me which came first, ordinances or the structures?
The ordinance here.
Okay. Doesn't this reading say that you have to interpret whether a use which was created before the zoning ordinance would be allowed to be contained? That's what this says.
What, 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 what did the situation show here?
No, no. You wanted us to interpret and give you a decision under section sixty-eight. I was just going to discuss this, especially under section seventy, but you don't want to do that. You wanted, sixty-eight doesn't, we can't keep you relieved because you don't, not you. The Sons' property use doesn't comport with this definition. It doesn't apply under section sixty-eight.
Well, what this board can determine is that the use to which Sons is presently utilizing my client's for needs a site plan approval or a variance, and we're going to do that.
What we can tell you, and the opinion of the board, is that we can find nothing which granted the approvals that the Sons have now on their property or under her. That's what we can tell you. We're not making a determination as to whether they need a site plan. That's up to you, the Attorney Committee, and Judge Hoxton. We can tell you that we can find nothing in our, in our, in our records which indicate that any approvals were granted. That's it. That's what we can tell you.
Well, what do you read from Jeff Hoxton's decision?
Page twenty-five of Jeff Hoxton's decision. Rights as follows. I also want to indicate that the court.
Very. Page twenty-five.
No, sundown.
Sundown, okay.
I, Jeff Hoxton, rights. I also want to indicate that the court will not be mandating a parking scheme as part of the decision. It's my view that interpreting the easement, I cannot find where the easement mandated or that the court disauthorized to mandate some type of parking scheme. I think that's probably more appropriate than what you.
Correct. Not the zoning board, the township. That's correct. If you think it's a violation, you should go to the zoning officer or to the township and ask them to cite this applicant or Sons.
I found that on two occasions by letter, in those spots.
Well, you know where the court has it, Ron. File complaint, little prerogative against the township for not, for not allegedly forcing its ordinance.
Well, what you, what you are making a finding is, if someone were to adjust it, that there's nothing on this record which establishes the right of the Sons of Israel to have the parking lot on my client's property.
No, hold on a second. Judge, as I understand Judge Hoxton's ruling, he said that you have a right to be somewhere on your property. But he didn't determine where. So we're not involved in that, we're not part of that lawsuit. What we're telling you is, we have no record, no file, no permit, no anything, which says the synagogue, the Sons can build a synagogue, or the Sons can, or where the Sons can park their property.
Let me, let me just say for one second, please. Just a second for you. This is the site plan that was approved by this board when the variances were applied for back in nineteen seventy-two. You can see over here, the congregation Sons of Israel. You can see over here, that part of Lot Five, which is at the corner of Madison and Fifth Street, where there's parking allotted over here. And you can see over here, the addition which was to be constructed, where perhaps formerly, there was parking for both parties, but now it's occupied by this expansion. By that expansion, they reduced the amount of parking that was usable for the congregation Yosefsen. If you look at this over here.
And that was a site plan application submitted by your client, not the Sons. Is that correct?
This is clear. This was a plan submitted by my client. I have also given to you the application which was filled out for my client for what he was seeking relief for. There is nothing in that application seeking any relief for Sons of Israel to park there. Sons of Israel was given notice of this empty place, and I submitted to you a copy of the notice, as well as a copy of the slip that was sent out. And the record shows that Sons of Israel, it's present in the resolution itself, Sons of Israel was present at that hearing with their representative, and they, they stated on the record, they realized that congregation Yosefsen had a deficiency of parking. Therefore, they said to the board, we will allow them to utilize Lot Number Six, which is over here, that is owned by Sons of Israel to park. And if you look at this, you can see it right here in nineteen, the two thousand and fifteen aerial, this will must park over here. So, I mean, that's what the resolution was about. The resolution clearly acknowledges Sons of Israel had notice of it, Sons of Israel participated in it, Sons of Israel received a copy of the notice. Knowing that notice was Sons of Israel joined in as a co-applicant, saying on this plan over here, they should park.
I'm trying to be a dead horse here.
You'll pass, I'll, I'll, I'll represent, okay? Also.
Hold on a moment, please. You've asked the board to determine whether the Sons' parking on your property should be considered a nonconforming use, nonconforming allowable use, because of the subsection sixty-eight.
You told me it's not.
It's not. No, I'm telling you sixty-eight doesn't apply. And I told you a few times, we don't have any record of what you want us to interpret.
Wait a second. First of all, if you look at this, you'll see on this plan right here, there's a walkway, which is right in the middle of that concrete courtyard.
You might, Mr. Hoxton, you might be correct. You've asked us to interpret something that you haven't produced to us, and we can't find.
I can't possibly produce it, I don't have records. Why am I having to prove that someplace, somewhere, there's a mysterious supremal out there for Sons of Israel to park my client's property?
Let's start again. You've asked us to render an opinion as to whether this is a pre-existing allowable nonconforming use under subsection sixty-eight of the law.
Do you think, do you think it is?
I think such, you've asked to interpret per sixty-eight, and that, in my opinion, is sixty-eight doesn't apply. Which indicated to you, as far as the zoning board's concerned, there is no record, no paper, no application, no resolution, no site plan permitting the Sons to park on your property.
By the way, Judge, Judge Ford did not agree with you because she referred to an application being made under sixty-eight, which she did not set, such in that jurisdiction here. So, if I'm telling you, this board, which is charged with this duty, they can determine whether a person owns property that has a nonconforming use on it, they can make an application to this board for a certificate saying that it's conforming prior to the ordinance, or that an object, if you lose next door, you also have the protection of this section. That's what you're saying.
But, but, but. Chairman, can I just, I think, sort of go back, when you referring to the, the dashboard, you're referring to this, we don't get it.
Yes.
So he says to you on page five, page five, eleven cross seventy-fourty, that it is sixty-eight. it is sixty-eight, forty-five D sixty-eight.
The judge is saying, starting with line eleven, "I'm not making any ruling on whether or not there's a right to make an application under forty-five D S T to the appropriate, to the appropriate entity and link with township. But that application has never been made for any type of a certificate of compliance or for the zoning ordinance or so."
So, is that what we're doing now?
I'm sorry?
Is that what he's doing now?
Uh, trying to.
Trying to.
But I think you're wrong.
Well, if we go, if we go back to your first comment about seventy A and B-
You're hoping not to, you're hoping not to get away with-
Well, I'm not getting away with it, because I, I believe that the argument is stronger argument, but this board has a specific power. Uh, and I read this as well, the York side appeals, which is alleged by the county admitting that there was an error in any order required for the decision refused by any administrative officer based on the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance says that you can't park there.
Where are you reading that? That's not here, really.
I'm reading, I'm, I'm reading slowly, okay? Hey, here in the side appeals, where it is alleged by the county that there was an error in any order-
All right, where is, is there any error in order?
Is there any reason?
No, let's take it one at a time, so that you can follow it. Is there any allegation by you that there's an error in an order?
No.
Is there any, are you saying there's an error in a requirement?
Well, is there a requirement is that because it's simply not being permitted use on that property.
Is there an error in a decision made by, by the township?
Yeah, there is. I, I only remain to request to the municipal, uh, saying that cars are not allowed to be parked. I also said a lot of your instructions, that was saying cars are not allowed to be parked. The municipal, I think rightly so, referred it to the zoning board for justice for the decision, that's why I'm here. The issue is, in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance, you have the zoning ordinance that says that that cannot be used as a parking lot, period. That's what it says. Now, the only way that Sons of Israel could park there, even though it's under permission use, given the fact this was utilized as a use prior to the passage of the ordinance, the owner would concede that it was not.
Mr. Gadsden, you're asking, we are deciding, I think in your favor, that we can find nothing which allows the Sons to park on your property in conformance with the zoning ordinance. I, I, what else we can say?
I don't think it works enforcement of the zoning ordinance. We don't charge enforcement of the zoning-
We're not, we're telling you that we can find nothing which allows the Sons to park on your property under the zoning ordinance or our record. We're not enforcing the agency. You would therefore, if you go to the township, I guess, or the spirit board.
Then you prepared to say that, uh, the zoning officer was inherently not enforcing the ordinance or ordering Sons of Israel to leave on that property?
That'll be more argumentative, Ron. I'm not saying that, you know I'm not saying that.
No, no. The man is pretty clear when he say it was an error made when enforcing the zoning ordinance. So, if the administrative official in this municipality did not enforce the ordinance, or saying this is not permitted use, it got it all, then I deny him the right to come to this board, this board right.
I didn't have a right to be here.
Pardon?
I did not say you don't have a right to be here. We've been listening to you for a minute.
Jerry, I hear what you're saying, I hear what he's saying. Can we, um, 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 yes, the Sons of Israel, they had any paperwork showing that they're allowed to park?
Sure, Mr. Kelly is here, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so, 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 so why don't we, um-
Mr. Kelly?
Answer this to Kelly, let's see what he has to show us. And if he doesn't have what to show us, we'll come back to what you're saying, that there is nothing here to show that you're allowed to park there, and the report's not an approved parking lot.
Fine.
You know, let's, let's, um, let's, let's hear what Mr. Kelly has to say.
Do you need any review? Um, we don't have any argument in nineteen sixty-six. I don't have any argument in nineteen sixty-six, which is what the problem is. Um, what is before the board tonight is an application for its terminations under two specific sections. First section is seventy. Now, we were back here last December, so we may have a call back, for interpretation for seventy. This board made a determination in that jurisdiction. Mr. Gadsden, I'm sorry, I actually moved on to the board, Judge Ford, saying the board aired in the information that had no jurisdiction. The judge for said the rule is actually incorrect, and dismissed the actual rule of the board. It was prejudice. Why did Judge Ford uphold the board as incorrect? Why was the board correct in the first place? Because Mr. Gadsden continues to refer to the nineteen seventy-two site plan that tonight suggests that this board approved that nineteen seventy-two. We all know, from being back here in December of two thousand, uh, two thousand and seventeen, that site plan was planned in the board's. You were being asked to interpret site plan that your board did not approve nineteen seventy-two. That's why you ruled the location. There are two parts of this application, I mentioned. The part of the seventy is basically a renewal of the request you'd interpret the nineteen seventy-two site plan, which you preferred and said it wouldn't be with our time, it was decided outright. So, the only thing that's on tonight-
Sixty?
Sorry.
Dad.
Sorry. The only thing that's on tonight is the application under sixty-eight. Mr. Gadsden's position to this board is that, what does sixty-eight say? What, what is the importance of sixty-eight? Sixty-eight is, you have a conformal use. Your building's built, you have a gas station, residential neighborhood, but it's a conformal use. The law has changed and says no more gas stations in that neighborhood. Sixty-eight says, your previously conformal use, that then becomes a non-conforming use, can remain. That's what sixty-eight says. We don't have that here, because we have no, this building was built sometime sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. We don't, nobody has the site plan, the rules, the variances, nobody has the building permits, nobody has the construction, but we know the synagogue is there. You know, we, we know we got buildings fifty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. Mr. Gadsden is asking this board to do two things that it really can't do, and it doesn't work. What are the two things he's asking this board to do? He's asking this board to say that the nineteen seventy-two site plan approved by the planning board, you want you to interpret that, it says that says no parking. You've already said you can't do that, you won't do that, Judge Ford's saying you're right on that. So, he's asking you to do two things. One, you can't do, you already said you won't do. The second thing he wants you to do, he wants you to assume, because we don't have the records, that means there was no site plan, there were no variances, there were no construction permits, and there was no building built. You can't do that either. What Mr. Gadsden is saying to this board is, you can only do what you can do, which if you can say, we can't say whether there was a site plan. We can't say whether there were variances. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go either way. What Mr. Gadsden is here to do is to try to get you to do something that you couldn't make Judge Hodgson do, that you couldn't make you do in December, that you couldn't make Judge Ford do, which is make a very specific finding that on the record, that there is no parking that is allowed on the school's property. Nobody can get that to her. Judge Hodgson, everything Mr. Gadsden talks about, aerial photos and site plans, we spent four, four days trying that case in front of Judge Hodgson. You were, to read the transcripts of all four days, and then always on anybody, what you would find is, that you put in all this information, had the same witness here that you had sixty-eight, and Judge Hodgson said, "No, it doesn't work." So-
All right, okay. Actually, maybe you-
Right, so, so, what is before the board today is, section seventy, or you decided, section sixty-eight doesn't apply. It's not going to this board to go over what Mr. Gadsden suggested the board. And then, Mr. Gadsden has suggested in his letter that he sent us September nineteenth, in response to the letter that Mr. Gadsden showed us in the seventy, that it was his intention to file an action, moving right against the town, and this is board, to enforce, and we'll deal with that if we're able to file it. They asked this board, for the second time, to do something that it shouldn't have, you consider it's a little unfair to the board, as long as it applies going forward, you know, the application should be-
So, so I just have one, one, one question for you, okay? And Jerry, don't say something wrong, please stop, okay? Um, thank you. Um, so you're saying that there is no application of building built, or building permits, or anything given, right?
Well, nobody can file.
Nobody can file.
Doesn't mean that it hasn't, nobody can file.
So, you tell me, then, how are you allowed to park on the sidewalk? Because we all know that, that there is, that that is a sidewalk, that is a courtyard in front, let me, that this is a sidewalk, this is a courtyard in front of a main garden fair to the school, where buses unload and a lot of children going in, got to the, there's a fire during the morning hours, and their cars parked right there over here, we, we're disputed here, you know? Um, how the kids gonna run out, how the fire truck's gonna get in? We, we don't know. So, then how can you park on the sidewalk? Who gave you permission to park there?
Well, what, what our position is, is that, that parking is permitted on this property, on the fifth and sixth street, and it goes all the way back to before nineteen sixty-three. And if somebody says that's not the case, then we get the town to come to cite us. What, what's really going on here is they, they, they lost, there's no argument with the York and Sarawak chairman, they lost it versus us, okay? What they're, what they're saying is, they're basically saying that through the back door, they're gonna try to do what they couldn't do through the front door, which is, they're gonna raise all the safety concerns. There were, there were conferences, there was testimony, there was, it was the, it was the synagogue, uh, that came forward with expert testimony as to how to line this property, how to set up fences so that it'll be safe for everybody involved, and it was the school that presented absolutely no testimony, that objected to Judge Hodgson making that recommendation, which leads to the power in page twenty-five.
So, so, let me go a step further, okay? Um, we know that there was never any parking parked on that sidewalk for years since nineteen sixty-three, because I believe in like, since, thirty-one years ago.
Okay, respectfully, Judge Hodgson made a ruling after the testimony that there was parking going all the way back to nineteen sixty-three and four, which may or may not be, but you know, that's, that's, that's what he ruled, and that's not-
I, I would like to see that, okay? But, knowing what I know, um, there was no curb cut back before the curb cut was put in, um, in nineteen ninety-three or, or in two thousand? Two thousand, two thousand, two thousand-
Chairman, chairman, let me try it.
Well, let me just finish my thought, then you, then, 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 then I'll, I'll get it off me. Um, um, uh, there was no, there was no curb cuts, there's nothing there beforehand, um, there was no parking there beforehand. There was a property across the street which, before the townhouse was built, belonged to the congregation, which that was Sixth Street. Perhaps that's what the, the Judge Hodgson meant to say that there was, that there was parking on Fifth and Sixth, I don't know. I wasn't privy, I wasn't at those meetings, I really have no idea what went on there. But, to, burden of proof to me is, show me that you are allowed to park on the sidewalk. That's what I don't know. Go ahead.
Chairman, we're, we are not, you know, forcing, we can't help, for instance, the Sons to get off of that parking lot. We don't have that-
We're not going to.
Please, don't leave. You are asking, you're trying to say, and you're saying, "Well, I've been here for thirty-one years, I don't see anybody parking." You're very wrong, but you're right, or you're wrong. But, maybe you're right, but we can't be the ones to say, "You can't park there anymore." That's not our, we don't have the power to do that. The township and the court has the power to do that. That's where this-
Correct. Township has the power, but we have, but based on our hearing, we have the, we hear for an application, was this an approved parking lot, or wasn't it?
We can't tell.
We can't tell. So, if we can't tell, the answer's no. How do I know? There's no, there was. Because, because on a sidewalk, you can't park until you show me that you are allowed to. That's, I mean, unless, unless, um, I have familial-
They might ask us to vote, is parking allowed now or not now? They're asking us to go back in time and figure out if they're allowed it or not, and that we can't do.
So, what are we doing now?
They're not coming in front of us with an application, asking, "Can we park here or not park here?" And that we can rule on, correct, Jerry?
That's right.
But that's not what's happening here.
Correct.
They, neither side has documentation to, uh, to, to say yes or no.
For instance, they need to go back, they go over to the township and say, just like, uh, maybe the next door neighbor will, will care about the house, might go to the township and say, "I want you to demolish that house as a site, as a health problem." And the township won't do it. And why are you suing the town? Because you're affecting my health, safety, and welfare. Mr. Gadsden, I'm explaining, for instance, you go to the town and say, "I want you to keep that on Sixth Street, they should be parked there." And if the township says, "No, I'm not gonna do that," which is, that Gadsden, known for nonviolence, you can sue the town, as you said before, and say, "You have to enforce the ordinance." We don't enforce ordinance. That's where they should be going, in my opinion.
We're not asking to enforce the ordinance. I don't think we, any of us want to enforce the ordinance. I think we all want to say, Ken, Ken's, Ken was here, my guess is he was here, to be the note, he went here in nineteen, I was around the legs of nineteen sixty-three, I was around the world in nineteen sixty-three. Uh, but, but, but what was the sidewalk designed for?
No.
You know, is there any stripes? Is there any, is there any, is there any, um, walkways?
Chairman, I'm just suggesting to the board, going down very slowly, slowly, if you start to determine what was meant in the sixties, when the, when the Sons thought, when the Sons built their property, with or without permits, with or without site land, Judge was already ruled that we correctly told Mr. Gadsden, I'm explaining, we don't have to repeat to interpret for the nineteen seventy-two planning board resolution now. Said that earlier. Now we sue, now we come back again, they lost that case, we want to come back again. Now he wants us to determine whether-
You're not allowed to park there now.
I'm sorry?
Try to determine now whether you can park there now.
Yes.
Or you can't, because it's not the legal parking code. So, that's the answer.
Hey, you're right.
I mean, uh, the, the, you said yourself, there's no record of how to park it.
Well, to your question, to the chairman's question, what do we do now? We know that in nineteen sixty-three, the school was involved in robbery at that point. He forced the robbery with the synagogue down, and said, "We'll leave you even to park on Fifth and Sixth."
That's just untrue. That's just-
Do you know what I'm struggling with?
I have a floor backbone, and I'm helping you with it.
No, 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 no. Ron, Ron, please respect Mr. Kelly and let him finish his statement.
So, in nineteen sixty-three, the school gave an easement to park on Fifth and Sixth Street. Now, that does not mean, that, that, that just means that I'm assuming to park, that I'm buying a town. What we don't know is what the town approved in sixty-three and sixty-five, with that avenue, respect to the Fifth Street parking lot or the Sixth Street lot.
Can I, can I add something? We also don't know where on Sixth Street, or why on Sixth Street. Because we know that the Sons of Israel own property across the street, huh? Sixth Street.
What I know, and I can prove to you, you know, given the opportunity with the fall of the trial, which is that Judge Hodgson found, that with respect to the Sixth Street lots that were caused me to not walk across the street, that the school had the right to park on that per easement. And, and he found, after listening to the board and the testimony, that the school did in fact utilize it for parking from nineteen sixty-three on, that I was trying to argue your personal experience, but this is what Judge Hodgson-
On, on that note, per easement, you said you're allowed to park, it's per easement, right?
Right.
But that is, let me, let me, let me, but that means not per township approval.
Correct.
You can have your own, you can have your own easement, I can buy an easement, I want to park in your home, but-
Correct, and Judge Hodgson did not find the town that, what we did find was that it's actually been parked since the sixties going forward. How? Well, again, there's, there's an assumption that this board is being asked to make, which is that there was no prior approval. I'm not asking the court to make this, the, the board to make this something, that the prior approval was not part of the rule.
Not my application.
It's, Mr. Gadsden is telling me, for, this board asking for interpretation, I'm not asking that. I'm just saying that what he's asking for goes beyond the statute of law. And Mr. Gadsden's point, he shouldn't be here in front of the board, I shouldn't be here in front of the board. If he has problems, he should be either in front of the town, or in front of Judge Ford, or in the right of red action. That's what he should be, he knows that's what he should be. But he's trying to get this board to do something it can't do.
The chairman, what's, what's the advantage of Mr. Gadsden, Kaczarowski, to do it that way? Let's say you're right.
To do what he's right.
What, why, why does he benefit to come here and say-
I don't know. I, 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 I can't see to Mr. Gadsden, but I am, I am mystified why we're here, aside from the time, and I feel with Judge Ford. Why he's not going to the town, or why he's not going to the board, is the other.
Now, I don't have any decent documents in front of me, there's a lot of evidence for Judge Hodgson. All right, let me, let me, let me read the court from the even in page twenty-eight, twenty-first of the side from the sixties, up to page thirty, joining line eighteen. Finally, and this is the judge's rule, finally, and of central importance to this dispute, the agreement provided at the Jewish Center, and according to the agreement, both agrees to permit the synagogue to utilize the parking, for parking purposes, the vacant lots in homes on Madison Avenue and also on Sixth Street.
Vacant lots?
Yeah, and, yeah, and back to twenty, agreeable?
What year was that? What year was that?
Seventy-two-ish.
That's when there was a vacant lot across the street on Sixth Street. That's exactly the vacant lot that is below that area. Okay, so, 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 that, that was telling you that the, that the easement for parking that they had internally was on the vacant lot across the street, not over here.
Chairman, now you want to turn to the easement, that's what they had a four-day trial for. We're not gonna turn to-
We can do this in ten minutes, you know, I'm sorry. We don't need, we don't need four days, it's very simple.
I, I think, Ron wanted to say something before, but-
I think we have the right to motion to get that.
I understand that. So, so, so let me get over to Ron after a second.
Let me just say this, Kelly, the side side of the law sign. He said he very good review that nineteen sixty-three, he was an easement. He reads the law in paragraph ten of nineteen sixty-three contract, which is, as you said, on the first law, further agrees, on the first law, that forces integration. And at the party of the third law, it was seven...
Yes, I see, you took the number of that coming in. Just standing there.
The nineteen sixty-three contract, if you read it in paragraph ten, there is not one word, easement. Easement is nowhere in this document.
The nineteen sixty-three contract?
Nineteen sixty-three. What there was, there was an agreement...
Can you show me what you're holding?
Yeah, I'm holding an agreement, which is executed on January the seventh, seventeen, nineteen sixty-three, June, July, December, or March.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think that's what he asked.
By far, it's subject of history. It lists a series of conditions as to how they would conduct the day in the seventh, how they would conduct religious services, how the school would not conduct religious services...
Go back February tenth.
Right, you know, what I, why are you doing this?
Because you're asking your head out. You're worrying about religious tennis, there's no need for this.
This is what it says, this is what it says, in paragraph ten. The party of the first part further agrees to permit, it says permit, the word easement is not used, the party of the third part to utilize for parking purposes the vacant lands it owns on Madison Avenue and also on Sixth Street. So vacant lands on Madison, also on Sixth, and to permit use of lands on Sixth Street for water room use and water cooling power. The word easement is just simply not in this document. In fact, then, in nineteen seventy-two, when the school came in to expand their building, they had this plan approved. Now, this lack of parking for the vicious...
The judge has already ruled that that's an easement. Where are you going with this? The judge has ruled that however intent is an easement given from one to the other, where exactly is it?
Let's assume, let's assume for the sake of argument that it's easement.
No, that's a state argument, it's a ruling of the court, it's a pact.
But, I mean, you need to get my justice, but Judge Hodson, when I, this clearly say in his, his written paper, that when he found that there was an easement, he was not deciding how it could be used. He said that's within municipality to decide.
That's right.
This is the zoning law.
It's not the municipality, that's for the township to decide.
Correct. We have to decide completely. Enforcing, enforcing a decision or a ruling of the board and determining what it says. This word did fine, that there is no proof to substantiate the argument of my, my colleague that there was ever an approval for the Sons of Israel school, not school running the synagogue, with regard to parking, with regard to sight planning, with regard to vitamins, etc. Because similarly, what they received for approval is just basically, if they have received approval for a building, nothing else.
Chairman, Mr. Gazarowski just said that you can determine whether there's any proof to legitimate the parking. Thirty-five forty minutes ago, he said, we don't have any proof to that effect. We said that. What he wants you to do is order the sons to get off of this line's parking.
That's not true, that's just simply not true.
Good.
That's not true.
Good. You do not have any proof, we've told him that, as to whether or where the sons can park on the synagogue, on the Gazarowski's line's parking. I don't know what else we can do. It's for somebody else to determine, you can do the township, because you can allege that they're parking illegally. Or go back to Judge Hodson, Judge Ford.
So if I were to issue today, Mr. Jerry Gasskey, give us instructions on what a motion should look like. What would your answer be?
That you do not, that we do not have any proof to say that where or if the sons have received sight land to park on the Gazarowski's parking. We have no proof and no paperwork, does it not?
That they could, that they could park there.
Could or could not.
Could or could not.
They have no, we have nothing to do with it.
No documentation on either side about parking.
Find nothing in writing.
So therefore, if there's no documentation, either they could or they can't park there.
You're just saying.
Right.
And it's not for us to determine.
Either they could or they can't park there.
It's not for us to determine.
There's no way of a motion to be made.
It's not, it's not for us to determine.
You can determine that they can't park there, you may not have the power to enforce it, to get off of there.
Now, how can I determine that I could park there? If I don't have the proof that there was parking out of there, or that I...
Let's assume, let's assume it was just a, a felony, which is how I would go stupidly to say, I want you to make a finding that this was pre-existing on the board of news, therefore I can continue that use. Okay, how can you do that? He has no proof, he follows his fore advice, that the ordinance was in place back in thirties. He has no proof of any sort. I mean, let's assume that, as you called, the attorney who was representing the board of the school and the synagogue at that time, who called any members of the congregation, who said, yes, I spearheaded this, I did this, I did that. As you called, the engineer said, yes, I submitted the sight plan. He has, he's done nothing.
That's a terrifying thing.
It's impossible for there to be, it's impossible for there to be no records. Somewhere along the line, they've been trying to ever apply for, there would be an engineering firm and an attorney who presented it, where are they?
I, I hear your say. So, on that motion, Terry, if there are no records, okay, I'm gonna come back full circle, you're not gonna like this, but if there is no records, if you're not allowed to park there, wouldn't the logic, I know the logic doesn't go more, I understand that, but wouldn't the logic tell you that, hey, since you don't have a record, you aren't allowed to park there, and since it looks like and it feels like, and it is a sidewalk and a walkway to the entrance of the school, wouldn't the logic then tell you that you're not allowed, you shouldn't park there, they're not allowed to park there? I, I, I know it's kind of a little, yes.
You, in my opinion, should not get any little things, for a few reasons. First, a lot of the serving legations were to Hodson, a lot of the legations were to Ford. Unfortunately, Mr. Gazarowski's client, this trial level, he walked before both of them. Judge, Hodson has ruled that the sons have an easement for parking somewhere on the Gazarowski's parking. And it's up to the township for him to judge. The township to determine where and how. Judge, Judge Hodson said so on the board, he said the township. Now, previously, as Mr. Judge said, Mr. Gazarowski was here four or five months ago, wanted to interpret the nineteen seventy-two landing board resolution. You say we don't have jurisdiction, follow the deal. The board says, the locals are, they did have jurisdiction, they're right not to decide that, just a question. For the same reason I'm telling you, in my opinion, you don't have jurisdiction to say what was or was not approved back in the nineteen sixties. How would we possibly, that doesn't mean Mr. Gazarowski's wrong. It just means we're not the ones who made that clarification, we're not a judge. We haven't had a full hearing, we shouldn't have a full hearing. That's what I'm going to do, either go to the township or go back to this superior court to make the determination. Be very well, you're right. The sons of the synagogue, they're built entirely without the approval, and then from the early nineteen seventies, we don't know what happened. And he's right. It is illegal. We don't help, because we have no proof one way or the other, and it's not for us to determine that. That's why I'm leaving.
Thank you. I agree, it's just sometimes I like to associate logic if you don't, if you don't park a sidewalk. If I were to come up here and ask, and I'd like to say, you know what? I have no approvals that I could or can park in front of you, on your lawn.
I would call the police department against the wall for favor of jurisdiction zone. That's what we can do. You can go to the police department and...
Well, I got to the construction official, demanded that they...
And go with your example, if I call the police department, there's so much parking illegally on my property. And if he says, well, that's, that'll suit somebody. I'll say, Judge, have the police department enforce the ordinance. Mr. Gazarowski is not doing it, and that's what he's doing. He's trying to make, with all respect, I can understand, in front of you, he's way out. He's trying to make you Judge Hodson or Judge Ford. Got a little further if you might.
Yes, I wish I could say something before I cut him off.
Jerry, just, just, I got a clarification. If there was a more clear history, if there was a more clear history on, or defined, where they couldn't park, would we still, would we be able to determine that, or we still would be able to, because if we had sight planning?
If we had sight planning, who would say to post a park here, that's what the law approved in the seventies?
Okay, and so what I, what I don't understand is, what I don't understand is, the buildings we know were built in the sixties, the day school came back in the seventies and entered the town, did an extension and made an agreement with each other about parking, and we have a sight plan here, why don't we follow the latest sight plan that we have and look at it in order of where they keep parking on? Or, I don't know why we're not...
I don't care, I, I, based on what, what, what Mr. Washington was saying here, now, I'm holding in my hand a sight plan dated nineteen ninety-three for the, when they went through the repair of the curb cut, okay? And nowhere on this sight plan does it mention a, a parking area in front of the building. It just, it just seems to me, according to the diagram, depicts a sidewalk. So, based on this and based on, if this would have been a real parking back in nineteen ninety-three, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-three, yes, then there should have been some sort of indication here that there's a parking lot over here.
Didn't the township give them, I could be mistaken about this, didn't the township give them a curb cut permit like ten years ago?
Yes.
Frankly, I'm getting...
Yes, but, but, but that's a, based on this nineteen ninety-three sight plan.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm not taking, you should come decide, I'm not taking, you should...
I understand that.
But given my opinion, you have the right to say, it's a lot, you're right, Paul.
I'm just trying to, to, to see how to...
I'm sure the judge will...
Well, that's...
I don't know.
The judge will go back.
Well, he has a judgment here, the advocate is in front of us.
And again, please go back to the judge, on travel which way.
Sitting here tonight, listening to the testimony, living in town for last, since two thousand, since nineteen two, I've gone to the synagogue and prayed, never been to a parking lot. How have you got a permit to cut out the sidewalk? It's the living there, that's how it be. I remember last minute, people running into the last minute prayers, to bump up on the sidewalk, there's no parking there ever. Maybe emergency, maybe last minute, I'm very comfortable with four hundred kids in the school and a whole staff of teachers, I'm very comfortable in the way I live.
But I wouldn't be having a touch on, you've got, you've got a beating. But there are four hundred students who would have been in school, a big portion of them in Nebraska, Nebraska, or Sixth Street. There's nothing in Judge Hodson's decision that says they can't unload on Sixth Street, as a matter of fact, he says they can. So, why are we risking the well-being of primary grade students for perhaps ten or twelve people from the synagogue, the parking cars, help to shelter all over this lot? Mr. Kelly referred to a report by his, his, his attorney, his brother, his travel consultant, John Way, who said under oath that the present situation was unsafe and gave a detailed plan of parking stalls, fire lanes, and the like. So there's, it's not a question that anybody's buying, that what's going on now is unsafe. And how can you possibly, and I'm just, and I'm very, I'm very into this case, okay? And I've had this for many, many times. We're not talking about suddenly they keep you higher, or they set back to ten feet rather than ninety. We're really talking, we're about common sense in regard to the well-being of the most precious thing you have, and that's your children. I mean, does that, does it make any sense, whatever, in any logical person, to look at this and say that you can park in dusty parks in all different directions in the wind, go over the curbs, go through the side, back up, turn around while children are loading the buses? Does that make any sense at all? And the reason why it doesn't make sense, then you got approval for it.
Can I answer the question?
Yeah.
This is likely, things don't have to make sense.
Pardon me?
This is likely, things don't have to make sense.
I'll tell you what, I have to...
You can help, you can go ahead, help.
Where it is, or what the ordinances are, I know one thing. But I've appeared before this board many times, you are the conscience of your community. We're coming here this evening for justice, and justice demands that your young children be protected. We're seeing, for whatever reason I do, this other part of this new part, you see my son on it?
Okay, I think Mr. Kelly wants to say something. Okay, do you want, do you want to say something?
Well, I'm following two things. Number one is, with respect to the concern that the chairman raised about potentially the Sixth Street lot that was owned by an easement, maybe the lot across the street, and the one that was issued, subject to confirmation, we're proud for it, that no one backed it. Back in the year, the birds and the Sixth Street lot that was parking it out of the border of school. My part of it is, means that the lot across the street, the old bit lot, it was never owned by the school, everyone's school, we never made the easement, and I don't...
On that side.
Well, so how, but why, why would logically, because I'm a fair mind, you do say to me, why? Why would a school, in specific document nineteen sixty-three, where the synagogue, the easement, park in the synagogue's own lot? It had the, easement had been that lot, so, so that would... And the other thing is, Mr. Gazarowski, Mr. Gazarowski has been involved with this case for a number of years. He is the fourth determinant of, I believe, of the town, so to say, one, one thousand, five, one thousand seven. The, the safety of children, the ability of two parties to use a property has been a forefront of the case throughout. The judges are not making decisions, trying to create a more dangerous situation. What this board, because of its experience of lightwood, because of logical concerns as to be described, are doing are basically going places that have been subject to litigation for four years, eight years, in some cases also three years. It's not the place where the board is going. The board has plenty on its plate, that Hodson has decided on his issues, he's issued a lot of PO. The real reason that Mr. Gazarowski is here in response to your questions, perhaps he thought this was worth a rack, round to go, I don't, I don't know why he's brought this board. He's trying to get this board basically saying, no parking, so that they can run and try to do something. Judge Hodson has said no, it's personally out of PO, the board has said no. So I would just ask the board to make a determination based on what's in front of it, which is a very civil action, seven to sixty, which they have no chance of. Thank you.
Mr. Jerry, can I just make a...
Yes.
The application here tonight is, is this a valid non-performing use? You go about sixty-three, seventy-three, nineteen-three, two hundred and three, is this a valid non-performing use? And we have held testimony for both of these, that this has never been a parking lot. So it's a not a valid performing use. What's a valid performing use?
There's no testimony that it was never a parking, there's no record that it was never a parking lot.
So then, to make it a parking lot, you have to have some record to show that it is performing, right now, it's not.
Well, you, you don't know that, there's nothing in the record. In order to be, in order for sixty-eight to apply, you have to show performing followed by non-performing. They have, they've been performing at some point, even getting the game of the sixty-eight. Not to mention the timing shouldn't have.
But this never was a parking lot, you want to use it as a parking lot, so you have to show that it is.
We don't, we don't, it's not our application, we don't have to show that, what, and...
So therefore, the advocate who's asking for us to say, is it valid or not valid? Nobody can prove us that it is valid, therefore it's not valid.
No, that, that's, that's, that's not how it works. It's, it's, in order to be here, they have to take the position that it was conforming and it became non-performing. That's what sixty-eight says. So, it's their application, they have to show that the presence was informed. Now, show us when it became non-performing. There's nothing in the record to show that, well, this is what that's even starting. They have to, to jump to an assumption that it was not approved in sixty-three is, is fairly flawed for purposes of this application, because they have to...
fairly flawed for purposes of the application, because they have to assume it was informed, and it was performing, now show us where a lot came in the mid nineteen.
Why can't you say it in reverse? They, because every illegal parking or every issue of parking starts out as non-performing, they have to show that, you show me that it was performing, because it's just like going into any area that you saw it was not performing, you come on a board and you make it, uh, performing through various, variances. So why don't you reverse?
Well, that's, that's not the application we're here.
Application is to determine, is this a valid, non-performing use?
Under, under section sixty-eight, and you have to assume it was.
And Judge Ford says that it does sit under the section sixty-eight, you have to go back and show it is, yes, performing and it's not performing, it's very simple. So if anybody wants to hear a opinion, I think we've heard it, and then we should make a motion, we'll go, I want to go back to court, go back to court, we can go back to court in any place, let's move on.
Do we have to focus on the public?
No.
No, okay, so.
He was just established, so all the documents that were previously submitted, uh, are in fact, in evidence.
Not American, okay.
Okay, can, can anyone remember anything? Uh, I, I, I guess before Jerry, we worked on a motion, we should, we should or should not put it, we all heard what he had to say, and they probably asked for some sort of, uh, a motion, but I'm not, yeah.
I make a motion that this is a not, not a valid performing use.
I don't understand what I mean.
That means to say that nobody is proven that it is performing, therefore it is not performing.
We haven't seen documentation otherwise.
So.
But that's, that's, you can talk anyway, because.
I agree, man, I agree one hundred percent. If you want a recommendation for me, if this should be a parking area, there's no chance.
But ask for recommendations.
I, I, that, uh, I haven't seen.
In your, in your opinion, what he says tonight, you feel this is a valid, non-performing use or not?
Valid, non-performing use. I haven't seen any documentation.
So that it's not a valid performing use, you just said, it's not a valid performing use, you did not act, that this is a fact, it's not a valid performing use.
That will not perform.
The argument is, Joe, I understand his motion is to make the rule that the parking of the suns, the suns parking on, you have a very important client, but it's not permitted. Is that fair to characterize?
Is a, is a non-performing use. Is that what you said, man?
Yes.
This parking situation is a non-performing use.
Valid.
Valid.
He's saying it's not invalid. Non, that means it's not a good use.
That is the application, and we sat here now for an hour. The secretary said we, they may come here, we are here, we listen to the testimony, and it is not a valid, non-performing use.
But wouldn't that, all that will happen is the judge will send.
So let go back to the judge, we have.
No, 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 I can send back here and make a proper motion. This application, man, you promised. Uh, well, if essence Kelly's motion is a third second.
Is there a second, uh, Mayor Kelly?
Then the motion will, unless it's a second, the motion dies. Is there any other one?
Do we have a second with that?
A second for no motion, I haven't seen any document, I haven't seen enough documentation to make a motion.
Right, right, there's no motion.
My motion is, I haven't seen any documented documentation.
If it was a motion, I would have said, uh, the attorney has told us what our position to be, we've, we've seen no documents, we're not, this is not always fine.
We're not helping the party, we're not deciding.
Corrections.
We want to try.
It's going to continue anyway, it's what I'm going to say. But what, what is your feeling as a, as a lightwood individual, what is your feeling? Do you think this is a valid, confor, non-performing use or not? No, I'm asking my associate. Do you manage this school, right? Did you park in this lot?
My daughter went to this school and, uh, for kindergarten to the eighth grade, off through the eighties, I never saw her park there ever. But that's not the issue in front of us, the judges have decided, our attorneys tell us of the distance where we should be, and Mr. Gassraski can go and call the police, as Jerry pointed out, not enough of the police, it is not our position to make that decision.
It is our position to make a decision whether it's a valid, non-performing use or not.
That we've heard enough of legal doc, uh, rhetoric.
So then how, how do they get past and get on this list again tonight if we cannot vote?
No, you can vote.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion that's a non-performing use. Exactly what everyone's saying is there was never a parking lot over there.
We can't. I think there was a parking lot there.
Not performing.
As far as I remember, there was never a parking lot there, and that goes about thirty years.
And you so were.
To face the what you said tonight, you feel it's a valid?
No, I'm not, the, the, the application is asking to interpret something that happened in nineteen sixty, and George, the judge, his name is Ford, not I. I agree with that a lot here. I invited you to the seminar, I, I think I addressed it in the gathering, I copied everybody, including yourselves. It said, um, based upon, I'm telling you, you guys, you based upon the attached, that both the minutes of the meetings were previously over two, the zoning board declined the request submitted, this would be new interpretation, far removed. Furthermore, we decline the request to provide an opinion, we decline the request to provide an opinion as to whether the suns division ever takes like that, or the parking facilities, or parking, and won't be declined. So why can't we make a motion?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
We entered the motion earlier.
We, we suggested my recommendation is that you adopt a motion incorporating that, that's up to you.
Incorporating that there was no.
Incorporating that you not provide an opinion as to whether. Don't provide an opinion, we didn't do it last time. And the judge sustained our decision that we didn't have jury faith in to do that. Very promising. How was the judge going to decide if we make a motion or not, or we don't make a motion, and how's, how's that going to help the situation if they go back? We got to make a vote, all ready to the other question. Right, a determination. And you make a determination last time, and the judge said we were correct in not making a determination, we were.
The gentocation of nineteen sixty or seventy, but the question is, to date, is it a valid, non-performing use? And the answer is yes. Do you want to go back to court and draw a rule in court that it is valid, or it was true, show the proof?
Mr. Gassraski has asked you, that this is a valid, non-performing use, per showed to subsection sixty-eight of municipal land, of course. I, given to you my opinion, that section doesn't apply, this is not a pre-existing, allowable, non-performing use, which is referenced in section sixty-eight, looking, my opinion, advising you, section sixty-eight doesn't give you the legal.
But what you're saying is that it's still not a non-performing, it might not apply to sixty-eight, but it's still a non-performing, is that what you said, is that, is that on here?
No.
Okay.
I don't know, it's performing or not.
No, no, valid, not performing, I, I.
Why are you slapped there again, right?
Why, 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 no, 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 no. What, what happens if we don't vote on a motion? What happens if we do not vote on a motion?
We need a motion.
Well, I need a motion, you want to have, say, you can say.
We have a motion, every second.
We need a second, Mayor Kelly's motion.
Every second.
I would second only because I really want to help both parties come to a resolution, and I feel that they come away tonight with a starting point, and we don't leave them in the dark, and they, they, they may be able to go back to negotiating there and draft, you know, what they need, what they, they need a, uh. All right, because I understand. A parking function, it should be, you know. I, I understand Mr. Kelly's motion, and I think you're seconding it, I think you're seconding it. The motion is that parking by suns on this property is not allowed. Well, we all said that, we all said that, the whole board. The voice their opinion about that already, we're, we're just trying to determine the language, whether or not it's not, it's a valid, non-performing, that was the application.
See, I think.
Go ahead.
I think that, that it, the complex situation, and it shouldn't be before this board, and that's exactly what we've been hearing.
Yeah, but it's here now.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be, what we should do basically is go back and stick to our determination that we made in the center, okay? Let them go to the proper authorities to make their decision, which is the township, and the police department or whoever, if they find that somebody's parking there, and they're telling, who's parking on the sidewalk, then let the police give them a summons, and let them get them out of there. Enough summonses are going to tell the people, hey, I can't park there. The, what they're asking us to do is to make a determination to benefit a situation, and we know, all of us know, that you're not supposed to park on the sidewalks, okay?
So that's exactly, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's exactly what Mr. Kelly's saying, that it's a non-performing.
Right, it is, but, but, but we're not in a position to make that decision, our decision should be based on what we decided in December, which was, hey, you know, somebody, don't come before us for this, because, you know, we're, we're not, you know, we, we go to the township and discuss within the township, that's what the judge has said, we have legal documents. We, we know what this means, dude.
I, I, I'm trying to give a similar example, I'm sure someone's going to object to this, but we're trying to put this in the form of better expectation. Let's presume we, um, approve a subdivision, and subdivision allows twenty-five miles per hour going to the subdivision. What do they have to complain, that they're, you can go fifty miles an hour, the zoning board tells the sub, go fifty miles an hour. You're not going to do that, you're going to take over this part, you're applying the in order, but that's not.
That's not really, because they're different kids, we're talking about a use of land. Feeling is, this is a use of land. Question is, I'm listening.
Is there, is there?
We have to move on, I wish more.
I'll second it only because I would really like to give both parties direction, to be able to, to share, and I would really like it to work for both of them, for both parties, uh, you know, maybe this can.
Okay, Mr. Gill.
Yes.
Mr. Hallowson.
No.
Mr. Langford.
I abstain with a comment, but the comment is, that's all I remember, it's very important there, but I don't think it's alone, it matters, but I remember that.
Mr. Engler.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Mr. Hallowson.
Yes.
Okay, we have.
It's, it's, it's three plus one acts, abstain. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gajari. Uh, motion passes.
Okay, moving forward. Uh, Master is out, what time is it?
Ten twenty-three. We're going to go with appeal number four, four zero eight six, Ironso, Sun Town Road. Eleven o'clock, we're going home. Uh, Mr. Pepper, can you hear that? Eleven o'clock, we're out.
What? Those, 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 that we stopped at the nine, um, what is that?
When, when this is your, 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 your application was formed?
Eleven o'clock. Why don't you put the hat on?
I'm saying, are you going to stop here, yes, at ten fifty, you're already close.
No, 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 two minutes left, then we act on the issue, then we go home.
Okay, from Terry Boden, GTA planner, September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan, and my subdivision approval with use on both areas will be subdivided existing lot sixty-two into two new lots. Existing lot sixty-two will be subdivided into two new, into new lot sixty-two oh one and sixty-two oh two. New lot sixty-two oh one will contain an existing above ground storm basin, and new lot sixty-two oh two containing the code guest house will be the subject and site portion of this application.
Very well, we wish to express my concern, and I am very glad you're here.
And here's Brad Clannery, back to the jury license, special engineer, special.
I guess we'll wait for, uh, the chair, I'm next. Did you say you had the door? Quick, back to court.
Uh, why do you need to watch for attention? And go back.
Today, Mr. Chair, I would love to have a look at the applicant, uh, the strategy stated, uh, the application is certified, the piece of property, uh, that is currently owned by the county, uh, the county is willing to sell this property, um, to a portion of property, others to the, the subdivision.
The board is wanting to supply, uh, again, uh, the market is before we, uh, before primary requirement, and.
A one is a, uh, colored rendering of the proposed building, uh, uh, A two is a copy of the mine subdivision, showing the entire property, which is, uh, currently a storm or management basin, with some, uh, property that's not used for storm management, owned by the county, the county, uh, has a contract to sell fifteen acres of storage, because it's not profitable, fifty thousand square feet, uh, for the subdivision property. Uh, A three is a map that shows the other, uh, development in, in the areas surrounding, um, the basis, uh, and A four, keep your.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm just short, uh, to, to, to the dashboard members, um, they can decide if you want to, uh, I'm sorry, you just have to.
We'll proceed with our testimony, and then we'll, we'll take, and we'll vote the next year.
It's up to you.
Mr. Langford.
It's all.
Mr. Luther Donalds.
No, no, I'm thinking about the checkups.
Chair, I, I really don't, people like, have, listened to some of this, and then waited on my proposal, to bring up the medical detail and so forth, like they had the first application to be, I don't think that's.
Okay, fine, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, and we will, um, um, Mayor, I'm going to continue, I'm going to continue, um, just, uh, on, on, on that motion, how is saying that she doesn't like the fact that the application is going to be split again, and we're going to have a back and forth again, and that's all, you'd rather table it because we don't have it performed till next month? What do you, what's your thing?
The.
And, and Obie, I'm going to see if you've got a question next.
The first night of zoning this year, two thousand and eighteen, it's supposed to say that it's not for, we listen to the case.
Mr. Gill, can you talk me back to this?
Correct, I said that.
We'll listen to the case, and we'll vote on it, um, on the next month.
But, but.
But, and, and people are here, waiting on, they're here, they're waiting on, and.
So let me tell you what I said, I said that there are six members, we're going to move forward to the tower floor, there are five members, we have a right, that's, the, the, the table is completely empty, but five is nothing. If you want to know what I said.
That is true.
I remember.
You want to listen to?
Obie.
I, I tend to agree with what I'm saying.
Okay.
That, um, no, it's, it's, it's on the bike, that I heard this, but now, then I have to go to the special weekend.
I, I have to apologize, but someone's helped us before, anything, okay?
You're, you're correct, because you, the, the chair can make a pass, and the line to this matter carried the, uh.
November nineteen.
November nineteen.
Oh, no.
No, 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 okay, I, I, I love to apologize, but there's nothing, and nothing to do, we can add a motion.
The application to be first on the agenda, maybe?
There's about ten others on the agenda for here.
Well, I was not so.
Both about open.
Randy. Morris, not that I see the only one.
Yes, you will be first.
No, Miles Tore, the only one, but we can put a second, Miles Tore. What's that?
Wait, give me the.
Miles of power is the only one.
I guess we can.
Brandon, Brandon, so candy and flowers.
This is really world business.
We sat through an hour's worth of agonizing.
But, no, I was looking differently, you sat through an hour's worth of education.
I, I don't think I, I.
Okay, anything else I can say tonight? No.
I hear how it's brilliant.
Can I, uh, can I ask you a question, um, Carrie? We're going home, probably, I expect.
Thank you.
Okay, woman, we got forty-eight one.
Yeah. Okay, um, can I have a motion for the resolution on four zero eight one Moses Gutman, four zero five five eight Lakewood Affordable Hazing, four zero eight two Mike Spitz?
No, four zero eight two, not doing.
Four zero eight, oh, that's that one, we're gonna have anyone here for that.
Just four zero eight one, or about.
Motion from Al Alson, can I have a second? Second from Mayor Gillis. All in favor? And add motion paid also?
Motion. Motion for the committee meeting, or motion.
Okay, I'm gonna go back and remember it, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you, man.
I don't know, I, I know nothing.
I know nothing.
I know nothing.
When Frank says I know nothing, I know there's some trouble coming.
I know nothing.
What?
Nice to see you. I'm glad to see you, neighbor.
Wait, wait, wait.
What?
I'm gonna.
Woman. There you go, look, thank you, guys.
Are you coming in, the hot? Mark?
I would like to, I would like to call Sarah, is that right?
Make it after ten, I'll probably go.
You mean yours?
Just call Sarah.
I don't mind, I don't mind if you have a verse. Yes. Yes. Always a pleasure, Brian.
Yes.
Will be in touch with you for the next year, I'll call you when I'm ready.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.